Well, I've been trying to do this. I figured like over time.
Good evening. I'd like to call the order. The Spokane City Council meeting for this evening. If you'd please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you'd call the roll.
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmembers Lepone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right, and we have two proclamations this evening. The first is for Arbor Day. Councilmember Kinnear is going to read it, and she'll be joined by Katie Kosinski.
Great, thank you. Whereas following a proposal by Jay Sterling Morton, the first Arbor Day took place on April 10th, 1872, in Nebraska, with more than 1 million trees planted and is now observed throughout the world. And whereas, trees can reduce the erosion by wind and water of our precious topsoil, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air and water, produce oxygen, increase the life of our roads, and provide habitat for wildlife. Trees are also a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, and fuel for our fires while increasing property values, enhancing the economic vitality of business environments, improving human health and well-being, and beautifying our community. And whereas Spokane is one of more than 3,400 communities designated as Tree City USA, now therefore Nadine Woodward, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, do hereby proclaim April 30th, 2022, as Arbor Day in Spokane, and urge all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands by supporting our city's community forestry program and helping to maintain our trees as they help provide quality of life for present and future generations. And our own urban forester, Katie Kosinski, is going to accept this proclamation and say a few words. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. Council President, City Council, thank you so much for the Arbor Day proclamation. We'll be receiving our 19th Tree City USA Award this year, and our urban forestry program has accomplished so many things this past year with the assistance of many, many community partners and volunteers. These important partnerships have allowed us to increase programs and the number of street trees we're planting, especially in low canopy cover neighborhoods. We want everybody in Spokane to be able to enjoy trees and all of the many environmental, social, and economic benefits that trees provide. I'd like to invite everyone to come to Arbor Day celebration this Saturday on April 30th from 11:00 to 2:00 at Finch Arboretum. There will be crafts and family activities, free tree seedlings, a climbing demonstration from Bartlett tree experts, lots of environmental booths, and the Spokane Master composters will again be there for a compost fair again. And so you can see our social media pages and website for more information on this fun, free community event in celebration of Arbor Day. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Karen Stratton has a proclamation for Small Business Week, and she's going to be joined by Joel Nania.
Hi, Joel. You can stand there. I'll read it, and then I'll bring it down. Thank you. Whereas, America's strongest economic growth in almost 40 years has been driven by the resilience of our small businesses, who, despite a worldwide pandemic, continue to pioneer innovative solutions to our country's greatest challenges and create opportunities for families and workers. And whereas, from the storefront shops that anchor Main Street to the high-tech startups that keep America on the cutting edge, to the small manufacturers driving our competitiveness, and on the global stage, small businesses are the backbone of our economy and the cornerstone of our nation's promise. And when we support small business, jobs are created and local communities preserve their unique culture. And whereas, the President of the United States has proclaimed National Small Business Week every year since 1963 to highlight the programs and services available to entrepreneurs through the U.S. Small Business Administration and other government agencies. Now, therefore, I, Nadine Woodward, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, do hereby proclaim May 1st through 7th, 2022, as Small Business Week in Spokane, to support and join in the national effort to help America's small businesses do what they do best, grow their business, create jobs, and ensure that our local communities remain as vibrant tomorrow as they are today.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mayor Woodward, for taking on this proclamation and endorsing National Small Business Week. I think never before has it been more important to recognize small businesses than today after what I would probably self-describe as a brutal culling of small businesses over the last two years. With the pandemic, we do have survivors, and it wasn't that long ago that my phone was ringing about 75 times a day here in downtown Spokane with small businesses calling and crying for help. And I think all the citizens of the United States have rallied and provided that assistance to help them get through this awful period. And now, the phone rings maybe 10 or 12 times a day, and generally speaking, it's small businesses who want to start, who want to grow, and who have made it through the pandemic, and they want to succeed their businesses onto future generations. So, I commit to you. My name is Joel Nania. I work in downtown Spokane. I cover the inland northwest for the U.S. Small Business Administration, and I pledge to you that I will continue to work hard to help small businesses here in the inland northwest and especially Spokane to grow and succeed and to thrive in this new environment that we're in. So, thank you. We're going to work hard at equity and inclusion and success for all small businesses, and I want to thank you all for giving us this opportunity to proclaim National Small Business Week. So, everybody go out next week and shop small. Okay? Shop at your small business. Thank you very much.
We were going to have a report from the Comstock neighborhood, but they weren't able to be here today, and so I'm going to invite up Major Perrin from the Salvation Army to give us a five-minute administrative report on the shelter that they are operating. So, Major Perrin, welcome to Spokane.
Thank you, Councilman Beggs, and also City Council. I just wanted to give a report on what's happening at the Way Out. Some of you have visited and others haven't, so definitely want to invite you to come and see what's happening there. You know, we opened on 12/22, and so far, we've housed 108 individuals, and of those, 15 moved into permanent housing with a signed lease, and nine moved into stable, longer-term temporary housing with family, friends, and other programs. 36 have returned back to the streets. But with that, I do want to tell you that we've had people leave and then come back because they realized we were a safe location in someplace that was actually trying to help them move forward. If you want the quick math, 40% are housed of that 108 and 60% left, but of those, some of them are coming back. Today, I've invited some of my friends here, so they can be with us. Of the 108 guests that have stayed on the Way Out in the past four and a half months, 27 are already employed. They're working. That's amazing. That's good news. Or they're enrolled in employment readiness training programs, and the average stay for those exiting the program is 38 days. As you know, the participants of the Way Out Center are asked to refrain from active recreational and illegal substance abuse or use, and over 50% of them claim they have a substance use issue. And so, having a shelter that we encourage it to be dry is actually helping them to move forward in life. So, that's actually a very positive thing for what we're doing. We have lots of community partners. Some are here actually today. We have Stars, Spark, Pioneer Stabilization, Regional Stabilization, Frontier Stabilizations, Spokane Regional Health. There's a whole bunch. Detox and just lots of different ways we connect with people. Of the 108 who stayed with us so far, 33 are women, 74 are men, one is transgender, 28 have been over the age of 55, and of those, 16 are over 60, and five were over 65, and one woman is over 70. Where'd they come from? Three from East Central Neighborhood Encampment, nine from Cana Street Shelter, 16 came out of a car, 23 were outside, two doubled up with friends, seven house of charity, two Hope House, six motels, 23 from inpatient treatments, 12 Truth Ministries, and five Unit Gospel, and one, the Gospel Mission Women's Shelter. Last permanent housing address for the 108 guests is 28 came from Spokane County, 45 from the City of Spokane, and 35 from outside Spokane County and outside of Washington. This month alone, we've served 66 of individuals who are working on exiting homelessness, and their plans and challenges, victories are unique as they are. And I just want to thank you for your support of the Way Out. Things are happening there. I would wish everybody who walked through our doors was a Cinderella story, but that's just not life. And what is life is that we're there to help people as they come in, meet them where they are, help them develop a plan to move forward, and those are the people that represent behind me. So, thank you for allowing me to share this a little bit today.
Thank you. And thanks, everyone who joined us with Major Perrin down here. We really appreciate your coming down and seeing you. Thanks. All right. So, for some of you, if you haven't been to a City Council meeting in a while, we've changed our procedure. We now do our consent agenda during our legislative session, and that allows people to testify about it. What we're going to do in a moment is have the clerk read the consent agenda, and then we have one person signed up to testify, and we'll have that person testify, and then we'll have a vote on it. I do have one update on it. Item nine was going to be a report from the CHHS Department recommending a shelter operator. They told us last Monday that they would have that recommendation for us this week, but they don't have it, and they haven't given us a time when they will. So, I'm looking for a motion to table item nine indefinitely until we hear back that they have a report.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Any abstentions? Okay, then that will be tabled until we hear back from the administration. All right, Madam Clerk, if you'd like to go ahead and read the consent agenda.
We did have one appointment. Would you like me to read that first?
Oh, please do. Yeah, I didn't see that.
Appointment of Brian Thomas as the District 3 Seat 1 Representative to the Citizens Transportation Advisory Board for a term ending April 25, 2025.
All right. All those in favor of the appointment indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. We really appreciate your service. We have several boards and commissions that the mayor often appoints and the City Council confirms. If you're interested in service, check out the webpage on the city's website for boards and commissions. It has the descriptions, it has the ones that are open, it has the terms for other ones, so you can see ones that are going to become open. And then you apply through the mayor's office for just about all of them, and then the mayor interviews folks and makes her recommendation, and then we interview the person and vote. So, thank you. All right, now, if you'd read the consent agenda.
Reports, contracts, and claims. Number one, purchase of Nomad IC 22 Mobile Command Vehicle from Nomad Global Communication Solutions, Columbia Falls, Montana, for the Spokane Police Department Hostage Negotiations Team, $448,760.17 including tax. Number two, three-year and one-month value blanket order with Wastequip Manufacturing Company, LLC, Charlotte, North Carolina, for new metal refuse and recycling dumpsters for the solid waste collection and disposal departments utilizing Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Contract, number 040621. WQI estimated annual expenditure, $550,000 including tax. Number three, purchase of Ford Ford Mach-E battery electric vehicles from Bud Clary Ford, Longview, Washington, for the fire department utilizing the Washington State Contract Automobile Request System. Total cost not to exceed $204,664. Number four, contract renewal with Infra Public Sector Incorporated, Tampa, Florida, for annual contract maintenance of the fire department's community-aided dispatch CAD system, covering maintenance fees and non-micro software licenses, and adding two additional CAD seat licenses for the new Spokane Regional Emergency Communications Fire Seats, at dispatch from May 1, 2022 through April 30, 2023, $98,640.76 including tax. Number five, multiple-family housing property tax exemption conditional agreements with A115 East Cleveland Avenue Investments LLC for the construction of 23 housing units at parcel number 35082.0919, commonly known as 155 East Cleveland Avenue. B Regal Residences LLC for the construction of 12 housing units at parcel numbers 35102.3615 and 36102.3616, commonly known as 2520 and 2528 North Regal Street. These conditional agreements will ultimately result in the issuance of a final certificate of tax exemption to be filed with the Spokane County Assessors Office post-construction. Number six, property sale agreement for surplus residential property at 1927 East Dalton Avenue with sale to adjacent property owner, $11,500 revenue. Number seven, report to the mayor pending any claims and payments of previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library, through April 15, 2022, total $3,807,174.37 with Parks and Library claims approved of the respective boards. Warrants excluding Parks and Library, total $3,584,338.44. B payroll claims of previously approved obligations through April 16, 2022, $7,828,099.17. Number eight, City Council meetings for April 11 and April 21, 2022. Item number nine has been deferred indefinitely.
All right, we have one requested testimony. That's Mr. Anwar Peace. Anwar, if you want to come up, and while he's coming up, just to remind people who haven't been here for a while that we allow up to three minutes. You direct your comments to me. You don't make any disparaging remarks about anyone here in the room or involved. And we don't do applause, and we don't do boos, so that it's just kind of a safe space to that. It's just meant not to be disruptive and create, again, a safe space for people to talk. Mr. Peace, you have up to three minutes. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Anwar Peace, a Spokane resident and a 22-year police accountability expert. At this time, I am opposed to the police department accepting or receiving any more funds from the City Council for special items that are not identified in SPD's annual budget, like this request for a $0.5 million mobile command vehicle. No more SPD special items request should be approved by the City Council until the council passes some kind of true police reform and accountability laws. It's been 671 days since the City Council proposed their 24-point public safety reform agenda resolution yet to be voted on. The City Council has had, the, the, the City Council had been waiting on the community roundtable discussions on police reform and for Olympia to pass police reform laws. But sadly, last week, one of those participants in the roundtable meetings now has officially withdrawn from the roundtable meetings, which that person is an Office of Police Ombudsman Commissioner. That commissioner officially withdrew due to the fact that the roundtable meetings have been intentionally stalled countless times, as well as the fact that they've been very unfruitful and unproductive meetings. Plus, on top of all that, many of the items, the city's reform agenda items, haven't been resolved by Olympia, and it's those very items that should be immediately brought forward for vote by the City Council, like the reform agenda, whereas Black Lives Matter and must matter to all of us if we're going to realize the promise of freedom and liberty for all people in our community, or agenda items like prohibiting bear cat usage, public input on contracts, hiring diversity, and implicit bias training, collaboration group on reimagining public safety, independent city prosecutor's position, or even publishing internal affairs investigation to the city website. It was October a former City Council member tried to tie $68,000 requests for pepperball guns for some sort of police reform or accountability, which that amendment failed as well. But now, with the fact that SPD is requesting this $0.5 million mobile command vehicle, we, the community, feel that if SPD gets a vehicle worth $0.5 million, then in all fairness, at this point, the community deserves to have $0.5 million worth of true police reform or accountability laws to take place from the City Council. No more blank checks for SPD from the City Council until true police reform and accountability takes place. If not now, when? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Peace. Councilmember Cathcart has requested that item three be taken separately.
Yeah.
And so, if prepared to vote for items 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, as read by the clerk. All those in favor indicate. Oh, I guess we're doing voting.
We do that?
Yeah.
We're doing, oh, okay.
Prepared to vote? Yeah. Okay, and then we'll switch to item three. Hang on, let me just give the TV station a chance. Okay, so item three is the Ford Mach-E vehicles for the fire department. All those in favor, prepare to vote. Okay, that passes 5 to 2. Thank you. And that brings us to some special budget ordinances.
Ordinances, amending ordinance number C36161 passed by the City Council December 13, 2021, and entitled. An ordinance adopting the annual budget of the City of Spokane for 2022, making appropriations to various funds of the City of Spokane government for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2022, and providing it shall take effect immediately upon passage declared emergency and appropriating funds in. Ordinance C36192, forfeitures and contributions fund, number one, increase appropriations by $89,960. A of the increased appropriation, $89,960 of the increases to be used for the procurement of office furniture not exceeding $75,000, and minor equipment not exceeding $14,960. B, the increased appropriation is funded from unappropriate reserves in the forfeitures and contributions fund. This action arises from the need to procure adequate office furniture and equipment.
All right, there's no requested public commentary on this. Any council commentary? All right. Seeing none, prepared to vote? Okay, that passes 7 to 0. The next ordinance was deferred until June, and that brings us to the next one.
Ordinance C36194, forfeitures and contributions fund, number one, increase appropriations by $74,650. A of the increased appropriation, $74,650 of the increases to be used for the procurement of mobile device analysis software and a vehicle-mounted camera system. B, the increased appropriation is funded from unappropriate reserves in the forfeiture and contributions fund. This action arises from the need to procure mobile device analysis software and a vehicle camera system.
All right, again, there's no public commentary requested. Any council commentary? All right, prepared to vote? Passes 7 to 0. Next.
Ordinance C36195, American Rescue Plan Fund, number one, increase appropriation by $750,000, funded from the city's direct allocation of the state and local fiscal recovery fund of the American Rescue Plan Act. A of the increased appropriation, $750,000 is provided to the City of Spokane Parks and Recreation Division to replace funding lost due to COVID-19 solely for the renovation of the Centennial Trail Don Cardon Pedestrian Bridge. This action arises from the need to provide additional appropriation authority for the Centennial Trail renovations to the Don Cardon Bridge due to increased construction costs.
There's no requested public testimony. Any council commentary? Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I just want to say, appreciative that we're able to kind of work something out where we're not going to be pulling some of these dollars from our neighborhood parks, which was one consideration at one point. And so, I, you know, it's not ideal, the cost increases related to the bridge project, and it's not necessarily what we'd love to do in terms of spending our ARP dollars, but the project's got to get done, and this way we can help save some of the neighborhood park projects. So, I'm just grateful we were able to make a few changes to make this work.
Yeah, and I just want to jump in and thank Garrett Jones, who's been spearheading this project. He's been able to find some local community partners to the tune of a couple hundred thousand dollars to help pay for this project, and so, thank you, Garrett.
Including Gonzaga University, so.
I didn't, I didn't want to say all of them, but yeah, Gonzaga was one of them, so.
Great, thanks. Any other public commentary, or any other council commentary? All right, with that, prepared to vote? All right, that passes 7 to 0, and that brings us to a couple of resolutions, a few resolutions.
Resolution 2022-36, modifying transportation benefit district projects for 2022, previously approved in resolution 2021-0010, adopted by Spokane City Council on February 8, 2021, due to project cost increases.
All right, there's no requested public testimony on that. Is there any council commentary? All right, just for those who are viewing, those of us who own vehicles and live in the city pay $20 car tab fees, and that is the money that's used to do construction, road construction projects on residential streets. There's a property tax levy for the arterials. That's where the bulk of the money, but those $20 tabs pay for residential. There's never enough to pay for everything that needs to be done. And we had an appointment today for the citizen board that actually analyzes, it makes recommendations. appointment today for the citizen board that actually analyzes, it makes recommendations throughout all the districts. So this, these are the projects coming up for this year. We had more, but increased construction costs required us to limit it somewhat, but the process is moving forward. And for those who live on these streets, it will be a bit of a burden while they're building it, but then the streets will be better, so appreciate that. With that, prepare to vote. All right, that passes seven to zero. Next resolution.
Resolution 2022-37, regarding the approval of Cycle 10, 2020 traffic calming projects to be paid through the Traffic Calming Measures Fund.
Kind of similar. Instead of $20 car tabs, these funds come from tickets for people who run red lights or speed in school zones and are caught by those cameras. And again, there's, community members are involved in requesting it for each neighborhood. We have one person who signed up to testify, Randy McGlynn.
Thank you, council president, council members. Just wanted to speak in regards to one of the specific projects that's in Cycle 10 for the traffic calming. Our neighborhood had requested, and this is prior to the changes of the program, for a HAWK signal to be installed in the inner section of Fifth and Altamont. I'm sure the council is aware that's a very busy street for East Central neighborhood, and we have a community center and other family resources that are in that area. So we, we took great consideration in terms of what kind of traffic calming project we wanted to see at that location. We also took into consideration the history of the rectangular rapid flashing beacon that was installed on Hamilton in the Gonzaga's campus area, and we saw how ineffective that beacon was. It did help, but there were a lot of significant problems with that, particularly with just pedestrian education on properly and safely using that RFB crossing. And so with that, in light of those, those challenges, we had specifically asked for a HAWK signal at that location. We were disappointed to see that that was changed to an RFB on our project. And so therefore, while we do support all of these projects, we think that they're very important, and we appreciate the city taking the lead on those. We would certainly ask that reconsideration is made on that particular intersection because we do feel that the RFB will be inadequate, and we don't want to see taxpayer dollars wasted for it to be installed and then upgraded later, costing additional taxpayer dollars. And that's my request, council. Thank you.
Thanks for sharing with us. All right, any council commentary on the traffic calming projects?
Can I just address Mr. McGlynn? So we were in the East Fifth neighborhood last Friday, the East Fifth Avenue project. Opportunities in traffic was discussed, so I can't promise, but that discussion did happen about Fifth and Altamont. And with the closure of the ramps during construction, he's made it painfully clear that we need some additional help at that intersection, so certainly aware of that, but thank you for bringing to the council again, Randy.
Any other council commentary? I just wanted to recognize Shawna Harshman from council, who's been coordinating our, our work for us, and then people in the Office of Neighborhood Services, and all the neighborhood councils, because we get the projects from the neighborhood councils and they rank them, and we really depend on your eyes and feet and ears on the ground to help us do that. And this is the last cycle of this process, and now we're moving to another one, as, as some of you know, that we're going to ask all the neighborhoods and the districts to rank four years of projects at once instead of just one year at a time. It can involve some bigger projects and some overlapping projects, so that should be kicking off real soon, so I'm looking forward to that. Prepare to vote. All right, that passes seven to zero. Next resolution, why most of you are here tonight, so welcome for that. Ms. Pfister's going to read it, because we added it last week, a version, and then we amended it just this afternoon, so it's a little bit different than you would have seen at our study session, and then what was posted, and then what's on right now. So Ms. Pfister, if you could go ahead and read that in its entirety.
Resolution number 2022-43, a resolution establishing operational and facility recommendations for additional low-barrier shelter investments, whereas the role of the city council is to set hopeless policy for Spokane and act laws and fund budgets, and whereas in contrast, the mayor and her administration are responsible for implementing those policies, laws, and budgets. And whereas in 2021 and into 2022, the city council was active in responding to the housing and homeless crisis in Spokane by passing numerous resolutions, ordinances and taking other actions, including adding millions of additional dollars to the city's budget to increase sheltering availability and other services. And whereas in June of 2021, the city closed the most utilized low-barrier shelter of over 100 beds without securing a replacement as required by municipal ordinance, and that failure has contributed to an increase in public camping and interfered with the ability to enforce laws against pedestrian interference and camping. And whereas no one low-barrier shelter proposal will solve the homeless crisis in Spokane, nor will every proposal meet 100% of all requested best practices criteria. And whereas council members have identified specific needs for future low-barrier shelter space by listening to our constituents, including tenants, landlords, home builders, homeless advocates, individuals with lived experience, and fellow policymakers, and now therefore be it resolved that the following criteria should be included in and used to rank any future low-barrier shelter space requests for proposal, regardless of whether the chosen proposal fully meets everyone. Priority criteria, number one, shelter space at a location with around 100 regular shelter beds acre on a daily, per acre on a daily basis for single-story structures, but that contains allowances for substantial additional surge capacity for extreme weather events. Number two, flexible space for increasing extreme weather capacity at appropriate locations by utilizing floor mats on a temporary basis. Number three, dedicated space for wraparound service providers onsite to help individuals transition out of homelessness. Number four, provision for an independent security assessment and provision of recommended security identified in assessment. Number five, opportunity for onsite lockable storage. Number six, memorandum agreements in place with guest service providers. And seven, proximity and/or dedicated transportation to training sites, i.e., apprenticeship programs, job search resources, educational resources, et cetera. Preferred criteria, number one, private smoking areas. Number two, plum bathrooms with showers and laundry inside a building. Number three, ability to have shower, bathroom, trailer onsite. Number four, nutritious meals available. And number five, open space with recreational activities and programming available. Be it also resolved that the city will solicit proposals for both a pallet shelter model of sheltering and a drive-in model of sheltering for non-recreational vehicles in which people are living, both of which won't exceed 100 individuals each, will have a secure 24/7 monitored fence perimeter to ensure the safety of guests.
All right, and before, we have several people who would like to testify in that. Before that, again, just wanted to clarify, based on some emails that I got, that these, this is not an ordinance, it's a resolution. It's recommendations for best practices. It's not targeted at any one particular project, it's just any RFPs that the administration puts out and the people who rank them. So it does not either, passing it or not passing it doesn't allow a particular shelter project, nor does it disallow a particular project. It's just to help focus the people who are presenting proposals and the people who are judging those proposals. But with that, I'm going to read the first few, first three people I have signed up is Earl Moore. Mr. Moore, come on down, and Susan Schuler, and then Andrew Rolls. And if, if you hear your name when I do, be ready to come down. We can spend less time walking and then more time talking, so, yeah.
Good evening. I want to thank the city council for allowing us this time. I'm thankful for the opportunity to address you all this evening. I'm here to express my concern for the homeless people in my city. I have a concern for this matter, because the homeless situation is in dire need of changes. You, the city council, have had lots of opportunities, choices, and chances to do something about this issue. My councilman from my district spoke often about his four-point plan on homelessness during his campaign. I haven't heard a peep about it. Many of you here are very quick to oppose every effort the administration has presented. What I see here on this board is, is an attempt at organized chaos. It doesn't work. You, I feel, me, have failed the people of Spokane. It has to stop, because you are ineffective. I hope you can all see this. Council members, this is not a political football to be thrown around. All people in our city are being affected by your waffling of these important issues. Businesses are suffering. People do not feel safe anymore, whether they be homeless or non-homeless. Some of your decisions are destroying my city. Yes, this sounds harsh, but I, I speak truth. I say thank you for approving the administration's ask for the funding of the shelter. Now let the city go to work. Let the administration do the job. Yes, a 250-bed facility will work, with opportunity to flex for beds in such cases as severe cold or severe heat. The administration has included a wrap, has included wraparound services, mental health, substance abuse, and job training. Here is a solution. I believe this surpasses your ideas and thoughts. Tents, tent cities, are you serious? What do you accomplish with a tent or a drive-in shelter? Our homeless need help, not a tent or a drive-in shelter. I believe your sympathetic agenda has created a crisis in my city. Let our mayor and the administration do their job, please, I ask. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Susan Schuler, then Andrew Rolls, and then Chris Patton. Welcome, Susan, you have up to three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. Thank you for having this meeting this evening. The impact of mental illness in the homeless population cannot be underestimated. It's easy to say, pick yourself up, get a job, go to a shelter, get therapy, find an apartment, on and on. But the reality is that for most caught in this spiral of despair, all of those things are so overwhelming that even though homelessness for most of society is the lowest and saddest situation one can experience in a lifetime, it's not as overwhelming as facing the enormous challenges of each and every one of those go-and-do-it things. One thing that we, we think that they can and should do, these neighbors need a safe and secure community where they can get individualized services to address mental illness, drug addiction, society anxiety, and other stresses that blocks their progress. My personal opinion is that we need to have homeless communities. Communities where they can be in a safe and secure environment, where if their situation is that they are homeless because they lost their job and they just can't get back on their feet, that they enter their community and they're giving the services to get them back out with, with employment that gets them out of homelessness. If their situation is homelessness because they suffer from mental illness that they just cannot navigate, then their path in that community gives them those services to help them get the help that they need, the medication and the counseling that they can to be back into society. It's a community where it's safe for them, it's a community that's safe for those around them. In light of that, the solution that's before you is the facility on Trent where they're asking for 250 beds or places that are safe for our homeless to go to. Please do not limit how many people can get the help a facility can offer in this situation. I ask that you vote no on resolution 2022-0043. This shelter is much needed for those that are on our streets. Please help us to show love, compassion, and solutions for our homeless brothers and sisters. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, I'll invite Andrew Rolls, then Chris Patton, then Clayton McFarland, and I should have mentioned this earlier, but the yellow light goes on when there's one minute left of the three minutes, and then the red light goes when it's over, and I will ask you to finish up.
Good evening, council president, members of council. I'm Andrew Rolls, interim president at the Downtown Spokane Partnership. I ask that you vote no on resolution 2022-0043. Although on behalf of the DSP, we are opposed to adding requirements onto the proposed facility at 4320 East Trent Avenue, our position is more a case of wishing to support the East Trent proposal, as a majority of you did last Monday evening. Our recommendation is for council to proceed with looking at a variety of different models of emergency services, but I ask that it shouldn't be applied retroactively to the proposed 4320 East Trent facility. I ask that questions or concepts which are raised in this resolution are resolved as soon as possible, and that you would place this facility back on your next available agenda. When the community was confronted with circumstances this January, which led to the establishment of an emergency shelter at the convention center due to a severe cold snap, you submitted a letter to the mayor which stated, "The time is of the essence, and we stand ready to help." The opportunity to help is here now, and a broad array of members of our community are asking that a perfect solution that would be ready in a few months from now not be made the enemy of a good solution in a few weeks. If we can get potentially hundreds of people out of the circumstances where they are preyed upon by people who intend to sell them heroin, meth, fentanyl, and engage in other forms of inhumanity, and we could alleviate those circumstances in a few weeks rather than a few months, how could we pass that opportunity up? I note that you have edited in to the text a change which indicates that these are now recommendations rather than requirements, and to that step, I, again, I ask that you take the next step by doing the most good for the largest number of people in the shortest amount of time. Please place the Trent shelter back on the agenda as soon as possible, and in the meantime, the DSP would be glad to research and provide examples of emergency shelters that although they may be fairly large, have a good track record of actually putting people on the right path. And I, I mention, or I have in mind, a couple of instances, one in the city of Anaheim, California, with a capacity of 400 people, an even larger facility, I believe it's in the city of industry in Southern, also in Southern California, with a capacity of 700 people. And these shelters have good track records of being the first step in the difficult climb to self-sufficiency and renewal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, Chris Patton and Clayton McFarland, and then Wendy, I'm not quite getting your last name, but it looks like it starts with an F. Welcome, you have up to three minutes.
Good evening, council. Glad to see everybody back, excited to be in person, so that's good. My name's Chris Patton with Rencorp Realty. I am the chair of the Downtown Spokane Partnership. And I'm here on behalf of the board today to ask you to vote no on this resolution. I appreciate the fact that it's not an ordinance, and also appreciate the fact that we've changed this from recommendations, from requirements to recommendations. The truth of the matter is, I think the issue that we should be discussing tonight is the East Trent rezoning, and it is my opinion that unless and till we're able to rezone sufficiently and, and locate shelters in industrial zones, we're never going to solve this problem. Okay, to suggest that we might need as many as 800 beds at some point, limiting it to only 100, would suggest that maybe we need eight locations. How hard has it been to find even one location? I know when the Way Out Shelter was located on East Mission, that one of the conversations that we had at the time was, these should be located in industrial zones. I think it's more likely that we'll have success in an industrial zone than we'll ever have in locating eight facilities or more in our neighborhoods. So I'm here tonight to suggest not only that we vote against this resolution, but also bring forth the rezoning of the East Trent property and move forward in that direction. Again, as Andrew said, timing, timing is of the essence. If we go through a process where we do not move the East Trent facility forward, we can easily find ourselves August, September, having the same conversation that we've had year after year after year with no solution in hand. So again, that would be my recommendation and my ask of council. So thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you. Next, Clayton McFarland, and Wendy, and then Jessica McPhail, it looks like. Welcome, Clayton, you have up to three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, council president and members of our city council. My name's Clayton McFarland. First and foremost, I'm a citizen here in the city of Spokane. I'm also president-elect of our BOMA Spokane, which stands for the Building Owners and Managers Association, and I'm also co-chair of our legislative committee. BOMA Spokane's been around since 1912, so over 100 years, and hundreds of members of our business community and commercial property managers belong to that association. And I'm here to ask you to vote against the proposed resolution tonight. What currently is happening in our city isn't humane, it's not compassionate. As we've sent emails to you before, we believe we're in an open crisis, and our mayor's office has offered a solution to that. has offered a solution to that. The city council continues to play games and continue inaction related to homelessness. You're surrounded by business leaders, property owners, and taxpayers and constituents like myself, that have offered resolutions and offered feedback that has fallen on deaf ears. I can speak for our company, I work for Goodale &amp; Barbieri Company. We've had properties that have had hundreds of thousands of dollars of damage, a single property, not tens of thousands of dollars in damage, hundreds of thousands of dollars in damage related to our current crisis. The proposed shelter is a resolution to this. It may not be a perfect resolution, but it is a resolution. I ask that you stop inaction, stop impeding solutions. And I've seen emails from some of you today that claim that this resolution is not an attempt to impede the mayor's office and their proposal, but I don't see how that isn't the case. Furthermore, the goalpost has continued to be moved whenever a resolution is offered. And we also don't want to be adversarial. We're deeply concerned about what's going on in our city, and we ask that our voices be considered, because it doesn't seem like they have yet. Ask you to vote against this resolution, and thank you for your time.
Thank you Clayton. And Wendy, did you know who you are? Excellent, all right. And then Jessica McPhail. And then, boy, there's someone I can't read their name, but then Aaron Riven. So anyway Wendy, go ahead and introduce yourself. And you have up to three minutes.
Good evening all, I'm Wendy Fishburne, and I'm a mental health care provider. My office is in the Tabio Office Center, essentially ground zero to Camp Hope. Our building has been broken into repeatedly, shattered glass and blood everywhere. It's a degrading situation for everyone directly involved and for our community driving by. I very much appreciate your continued and extensive efforts moving the needle forward in the homelessness issue in Spokane. Unfortunately, this resolution is dead on arrival due to the bed capacity limitations identified. I'm tracking with Councilman Cathcart on this. Just as you all wisely see the need for building in surge capacities due to extreme weather situations, we have an extreme situation that's plaguing our community and truly our entire nation, the academic fallout of a pandemic and the influx of fentanyl. We have a crisis surge situation right now, and summer is coming quickly. Limiting capacity should not be at the top of the list. Other provisions in the resolution are brilliant and helpful, thank you, but please greenlight the zoning changes necessary on Trent as a temporary provision for this current surge situation. You've also asked for innovative responses from community members for the long-term vision of homelessness interventions. Mine is a regional approach that addresses our correctional facility crisis, detox and rehab needs, as well as job training and temporary housing pipelines. The Kaiser Aluminum Plant is a superfund site that could form a long-term vision for our desperately needed new correctional facility, partnered with detox, rehab, health and human services, job corps training, as well as provisional housing, patterned after Portland's and Vancouver's Safe Park and Rest villages with showers and restrooms, pallet or FEMA housing with a pipeline towards independent living. Law enforcement could do their vital work and bring offenders to the triage complex, where individuals could then choose correctional response or detox, rehab, health and human services, job retraining, and temporary shelter opportunities. The presence of law enforcement would better protect those individuals in the temporary shelters. This would allow for a more sophisticated responding to each individual. We could also be positioned to strongly benefit the citizens of Hilliard by allowing them community access to the job corps opportunities and HHS. The compassionate Beat Cop Mental Health Pod Response could be instituted in this area of our community as well. Please retool the current resolution raising the capacity limitation, and let's potentially consider becoming a national model of criminal justice reform, addiction recovery, and employment housing pipeline opportunities while cleaning up the environment. Thank you.
Thank you Wendy. Next Jessica McPhail, and then Michael McGuire, and then Aaron Riven. Is Jessica here? Michael, come on down.
Council President Beggs, members of the Spokane City Council, Michael McGuire, Spokane, Washington. A homeless person is a human being, yet the homeless are often criticized and ridiculed. Recently, an individual ridiculed homeless people living in tents near the Spokane Freeway. That individual believed homeless people should be hidden from sight like lepers. Yet homeless people have good ideas and good insights. More information is needed on location of shelters, how to get there, where the shelters are. Transportation is needed for the homeless shelters. A hungry person cannot walk far. And yes, maybe there are tents in heaven, maybe, beautiful tents, where the homeless have finally found a permanent home. And maybe the person who ridiculed the homeless near the Spokane Freeway, again, will see the same tents, only he will see them from a distance, never to enter the tents. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Aaron Riven, and then Rick Bowkuk, and then Major Perrine, if you still want to testify. Welcome, you have up to three minutes.
Awesome, thank you. City Council, thanks for having me. My name is Aaron Riven. I own Ladder Coffee Roasters here in Spokane. I have four locations, and all have been affected by the homeless crisis we have in Spokane. As many of you guys know, our brown status location was broken into, our safe was stolen, cash register, and many other things. For the past three months, our landlord has had to replace our AC, which is $10,000 apiece. So in less than three months, we've spent over $30,000 trying to get our buildings functional for our city. Our city relies on us to provide them with experiences that they can't get other places. I ask you guys to vote no against this new resolution. We need to get this problem fixed soon. I have in front of me, this is, pre this year, this is 6-1, 21 through 12, 31, 21, over 55 pages of just police reports to one shelter downtown. And if you look on them, most of them is thefts, medics, noise, thefts, assault, trespasses. If we don't handle the situation, we're going to continue to have a problem in our city. And so we need a resolution quick. And so I'm asking you on behalf of the citizens of our city that we get this thing passed and increase the number of beds. I am a two-time felon, ex-heroin addict. I've been on the streets, I know what it's like, I know what tough love is like, and I'm asking you guys to understand that we need to move quick if we want to better our city. I see a city that is beautiful, that is full of passion to see its people thrive, and right now, we're not allowing that to happen. And so I ask you guys to let's let our city thrive. Thanks.
Thank you, Aaron. Next is Rick Bowkuk, then Major Perrine, and then Emily Strode.
Good evening, Rick Bowkuk, Spokane. I say this many times, a lot of times when people are having their discussions how to solve these problems, they don't include the people that they're trying to help. They don't talk to them, even they might think you do, but you think of this tent city, what's making it successful compared to a shelter? I give you one thing that makes it successful, is people have something they can call their own. That tent belongs to them. Those recreational vehicles belong to them. It's part of their identity. Now what you want to do, and here's the solution to your problem, you want to take these people that have their own identities right now, and you want to put them in an institutional environment, really close to each other, and they'll be put into a place next to a person that they have no idea who it is sometimes. You don't know if it's a sex offender, you don't know if it's a drug dealer, you don't know if it's a drug addict, you don't know if it's an alcoholic, you don't know who this person is that you're usually put next to. So I don't think you look at the picture here. Now a lot of these people, they talk about the little houses. The little houses, that's a really good idea, because again, it goes back to identity. This person has something they can say is their own. Again, your solution is to strip this identity from them and start eating them in a place. How do you think that makes these people out here that you're talking about, that you don't even include in personal conversation? It's like, I remember the stakeholder problem. You have these stakeholders over here, they're talking about solving a problem, but they never include the ones they're talking about in the problem. And am I being listened to? Are you paying attention to what I'm saying about identity? What if it was your identity? Now this thing about couples. See, that's another thing. See, people that live in tents, they could be a couple. When they go to a shelter, and I always just heard this, you can be a couple, but you can't be together. So you think about what that does to a couple. Am I being heard here? Am I being listened to? I think you're not looking at the big picture, you're just looking at a partial picture. You're not paying attention to the people you're talking about. It's like, and then the constant story you hear back here from other people is that they're criminals. All you hear about is theft, robbery, drug addiction, that's what you hear about. You do not hear about the good side of the people that you're talking about. You just hear about the bad side. And that bad side is still a minority. It's not the full people, but yet that's what you keep hearing about. You keep hearing the bad side, the minority side, you don't hear about the human side. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. All right. Major Perrine, then Emily Strode, and then Catherine Corrick. Hi Major, good to see you again.
Hello, good seeing you again. Thank you, President Beggs and council. I just, I would say, the way this is written right now, I would encourage you to vote against it, but I just want to encourage you, I think you're going in the right direction, going in the right direction. The parts I have concerns with is the 100 regular beds, shelter beds per acre, and I'm not sure that's realistic. I know shelters can operate in the larger capacities, and you just got to put, we put the beds apart, six foot apart, and it still provides for folks to have a good quality of life while they're being helped to exit homelessness. And I think that's, I'm sensing what your real plan is, how do we provide a path to get people out of their situation and into regular housing and regular society, be reunited as part of our community, while not staying on other people's property? Because that's really kind of the big issue. And how do we help them to find jobs and get reconnected for the services they need? And so that's why the proposal that the city put out, the RFP put out, I think was a good step in that right direction. No plan is perfect, but at least that was a good start. I do have some other concerns about the flex space issue. It's just making sure, I agree that sometimes we have to use mats, but that is not a good idea. So if we have, if it's 100 beds and then we have to do 300 mats, that means older people are going to be climbing up and down from the floor, and that is really difficult on their body. So I just would recommend that not be a recommendation, it'd be like a last resort emergency type thing. And the last one is, is the whole pallet shelter model, I'm not in agreement with that, just simply because I don't believe a tent is a, as much as people might like it, really provides dignity or value. And I feel like as a society, when we give somebody a tent, it's what it really says is, "I go away," and you have no value. And really, we should be providing places where people can feel like it's their own place, a home, apartment, whatever that might be. Pallet homes kind of fit into the requirement of, almost like giving somebody a fancier tent. But thank you for this. I encourage you to vote no, but keep working on it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Major. Emily Strode, then Catherine Corrick, and then Julie Garcia.
Hi, members of, ooh, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to speak. You know, I was planning on just signing in and not saying anything, but yesterday, you know, the weather was nice, so like a lot of folks, I'm sure, in Spokane, I was doing yard work. Behind my alleyway, I share an alleyway with two of my neighbors, and I was pulling out weeds, and I found needles behind my house. My next door neighbor is a single mom with three young boys under the age of eight. They're often playing basketball, riding their bikes back there. I'm really glad that I found those needles and that, you know, my neighbor's kids did not. But that made me feel really helpless, hopeless, that that's the situation that's happening in our city. I live in the Nevada Heights neighborhood, just for awareness, but you know, I don't feel safe in my city. But you know what, a safe city is a thriving city, one where our citizens and visitors want to come and enjoy our downtown, our businesses, all of the beauty that our city has to offer, where businesses want to invest and grow, one where we can compassionately help those in need. I love Spokane. I'm not from here originally, but I've made it my home the last six years. But what I'm seeing right now is not a safe city. It's not a thriving city. We need to empower our police department to identify and separate the two different populations of homelessness, of the homeless on our streets immediately, for the safety of all of our citizens. Delaying the shelter on Trent means that we are delaying the police department's ability to do just that. In the meantime, our downtown becomes less safe, our neighborhoods become less safe, our citizens, our homeless populations, others, we suffer. In addition to supporting our law enforcement officers and empowering them to keep us safe, I'm asking you all to vote no on this resolution. We can't afford to delay any longer. Please move forward with the property on Trent and vote no on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Catherine Corrick, then Julie Garcia, and then Steve Corcor.
Hi, my name is Catherine Corrick, and I've been a mental health counselor and a substance abuse counselor for about 20 years, and in an earlier career, did human services. And for the last couple of years, have been looking into homelessness, educating myself about the needs of homelessness, and in particular, spending some time in several different shelters, and have researched and looked into some of the tiny hut communities that have sprung up around the country. I also worked as a point in time volunteer this year, and spoke with about 60 unsheltered folks in various areas of the city. And what I heard from them was an incredible fear and inability to be warehoused in large buildings. So, and a need for community, being part of a couple, many of them, having their pets. Okay, so I think these are things that need to be factored in. We're at a point where we need to think about how folks can be moved out of homelessness. And I believe that it's by creating community where people can form connections with staff and providers, as well as with each other. That requires a smaller community than a large warehouse that has been talked about like it's a prison. It just, it makes me sick to hear about that mentality. So I would ask you to consider vision for the future, and setting things up so that they can be helpful in moving folks out of homelessness. The facility on Trent scares me. There's been no consideration for a modification of the building to accomplish the objectives here that seem really spot on as far as the kind of amenities that are needed for people to feel like they have dignity. I attended a meeting that was chaired, that was at a church recently with an architect who has done over 60 projects throughout the country of tiny hut and cohousing kind of communities. And I think those kinds of things are realistic, and that that kind of approach is way above a tent. So I'd urge you to consider that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Catherine. Next Julie Garcia, and then Steve Corcor, and then Jason Green.
Hi, Julie Garcia, city of Spokane. I read your resolution, and it's beautiful. And the reason that it's beautiful is because it's setting the precedent for best practices. Best practices have got to be adhered to. I do have one issue with it, though, as this 100 beds per acres, I don't believe that this resolution even affects the Trent location. I don't think that this has anything to do with it. But this precedent- But this precedent sets best practices for the City of Spokane, and best practices are where we need to go. We need to have an idea of what works and follow it. You know where I stand with pallet shelters in tent cities. I agree that they're not, tent city's not the best option. But right now, as of today, the head count was 401 at that tent, on that one city block down on East Trent. I mean, down at Second Enray. That's a lot of people. We need shelters. We need low barrier shelters. I don't think this is a bait whether or not this is a high barrier or a low barrier. This is not going to solve crime in downtown. Relationships do that, building trust. And what's needed for that is for you guys to speak to low barrier service providers, business owners, high barrier shelter providers. They have good ideas, and we need them all. And they have valid concerns, but if you're not addressing low barrier service providers, you're not actually solving anything, because we're the folks that get people to your shelters. Do y'all know who Tammy Myers is? I bet none of you really do. Well, Tammy Myers does more work on the street because she's a low barrier outreach provider. You've never talked to her. You've never brought her in here, you've never asked any questions. Nobody brought me in to ask what best practices are either. I come here every week, I speak to you about what's needed, and it falls on deaf ears, not just here, but in the administration, in CHHS, in every department in our community. Nobody's talking to the people that actually do the work. We're the folks that are gonna fill your shelters. We're the folks that are gonna create the relationships that bring these people there. And trying to stuff 250, 300 people in a building, we're not gonna be able to get them there, folks. That's the problem. That's what we keep stressing to you. We can think they're great ideas, but if you haven't talked to the providers, we're not gonna be able to get folks there. We got people to your convention center because it was an emergency. How do we do that now? I really believe this is a criteria for best practices in Spokane, and you need to vote yes on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Steve Corker, then Jason Green, and then Ron Simon.
Council President, and members of the council. I came down because when I saw the original resolution, it was a requirement, and I'm very pleased that now it's a recommendation. I think it's a good starting point. I think the idea of having inclusion of more people who are actually dealing with the problem is absolutely critical. It's an ongoing process, and I was pleased that last week you decided to join the housing initiative, because I think you will learn about best practices and practices that have failed. And you have to keep monitoring it depending on the situations. It's a working document, and I just encourage you to continue that process. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Jason Green, then Ron Simon, then Teresa Simon.
Good evening, Council. President Beggs, Jason Green, City of Spokane. I've read through the resolution, and for the most part, I'm gonna say I really agree with it. I do have one issue where you say, whereas no low barrier shelter proposal will solve homelessness crisis in Spokane, nor will every proposal meet 100% of all requests of best practices. And my issue with that is that language is very vague. I think it gives you guys two outs. One, you could do the right thing, which says, hey, not every proposal's gonna be covering 100% of what this RFP is, so we now have the right to request and accept multiple proposals for the same RFP to cover 100%. That would be a perfect world, that would assume you guys do the right thing. The other side is, you guys could just say, eh, well, they don't have any wraparound services, but that's the one the mayor wants, so we're gonna go ahead and push it through anyways. And it gives you that out, and you've still followed your own resolution. The other real issue I have with really any of your guys' resolutions is they have no teeth. And where I go with this is, you state in your own piece here, and several of the business owners downtown have said, support the mayor, support her plan. We're in this situation because the mayor has not followed our own RCWs. We're in this situation today because the mayor has not followed the ordinance that you guys set in place. And the problem is, if I don't follow an RCW, let's say I park a shower trailer that I own, and I park it on the street, or I park it in my front yard, code enforcement's gonna show up, and they're gonna write me a ticket, and I'm gonna have to go to court to deal with the issue. Our mayor has failed to follow an RCW, and there's no recourse for her. She ignored your ordinance, there is zero recourse for her. You guys have no teeth. You need to start actually doing something. You need to set a proposal, or set a guideline, or if you create an ordinance, or you create an RCW, actually force the policy through. I don't know what teeth you guys have to be able to force things to happen, but we're in this situation because there hasn't been any recourse for it. And lastly, just to address this idea of, we can just arrest people and tell them, you know, either go to treatment or go to jail. As a reminder, 90% of people that are arrested for drug offenses reoffend. You can't arrest somebody out of homelessness, you're not gonna arrest them to sobriety. It just doesn't happen, it's not reality. There's not a, there's not one study out there that shows a bunch of cops out on the street arresting everybody, who's gonna fix anything, and it's 50,000 bucks a year to put them in the prison, it's far less to put them in a shelter, it's far less to put them in a pallet home, it's far less to leave them in an RV. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Next, Ron Simon, then Teresa Simon, and then Alicia Barbiere.
Good evening, people. Thank you for having me here. I didn't get a chance to read the resolution, but I do agree with a lot of the resolution. I do have questions that, if there's 401 people at Camp Hope, how many homeless do we have in Spokane? In excess of 500? I would say easily, you know? Needless to say, they're not gonna fit, they didn't fit in the convention center, they're not gonna fit in that shelter. I don't know what the turnaround time was to remodel that shelter, to make it, put in the amount of restrooms they needed, showers, and the other items they need, just, you know, just to get on with life. Are they gonna allow pets? They're gonna allow them to bring their pets? You know, I guess one of the, one of the stations went down there and surveyed 21 people, and 100% of the 21 people said they would not go to the shelter. So you're gonna have a shelter with nobody in there if that's the case. How many people have actually gone down there and talked to the people that are living at Camp Hope? You know, it's nice to talk to the service providers, but when you get down to the wire, those are the people that are living there. They have, they have their own opinions, and they will probably be more truthful than anything that anybody else will tell you. I'd love to see the people get to a place where they can at least have their own mail delivered, they can start rebuilding their lives, and I'd love to see the city kind of get together. And there used to be, like, state employment offices used to have job incentive things. Right now, we have businesses that do not have enough employees, we have people that need jobs. Give the businesses the incentive to go ahead and train them, and help the homeless basically get back on their feet and get out of homelessness. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ron. Next is Teresa Simon, Alicia Barbiere, and then Brianna Gorder.
Good evening. The first thing I'd like to say is, Betsy Wilkinson, I'm very proud of you for standing up for your rights, for your property, and against the police department. Congratulations. Second thing I'd like to say is, we have three homeless houses. That means that we have houses filled with homeless people, and they all pay their rent. Couple of them are disabled, most of them have jobs, some of them have bought cars, some of them are going to college. The police aren't out at those properties. I can't say I didn't have one little incident at one property that we gave somebody a shot, and it didn't work, but for the most part, they love me and I love them. They're good, they're good people. We need to give them a shot. I want to say that Julie Garcia and her staff knows everybody's names. She walks by, hey, Eric, hey, John, hey, Sam. She knows everybody's names, her staff knows who everybody is. They have faces, identities, issues. I'm not gonna tell you, you're never gonna find a needle. I'm not gonna tell you, you're not gonna find a needle in your back alleyway. I live on Thor, and I find needles. I pick them up and I throw them in the garbage. They could be diabetic, they could be heroin, they're needles. They exist. I think that you need to not dump 100 people into a building with drug problems. And I'm gonna tell you a story that I've never really told anybody about myself. In 1986 or so, I went to community mental health to get my roommate some help, because they were driving me crazy. And they looked at me and they said, you know what, Teresa? We can't help them because they're not here, but we think we can do something for you. But you gotta be clean. And I went home that day, and I shut the door. And I spent two years. You cannot get sober if the stuff is around you. You've got to give these people space to get clean. They can't do it when it's around them. You have to separate them and give them the dignity, and you need to give them the social workers that can actually help them to fix whatever it is that's going on, whether it's personal counseling, or it's getting clean, whatever is causing that, that has to be addressed. And it may be two people in one hut at a time. And you need to trust the people who know the people's names to know what's going on.
Teresa. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Teresa. Next is Alicia Barbiere, then Brianna Gorder, and then Phil Altmaier.
Good evening, Council.
Hi, Alicia.
First, I do want to state that I am happy to see that this resolution was changed to a recommendation, although even with that wording, I kind of wonder why it is even proceeding with a vote if it's just a recommendation. It should be something that you pass on to administration. But with that, I want to take the opportunity to say that I think we can all agree, there is no perfect solution to homelessness, no perfect shelter location, no perfect setup. Because the reality is, those that are homeless, and those that are living in shelters, aren't living their best life. But limiting options by the way of this resolution, and allowing illegal encampments to continue, is inhumane and wrong for our community. You've proposed seven priority criteria in this resolution, but what about the priority of identifying a shelter? As we've all heard here, trying to find one location has been difficult. Based on the count that I just heard of 401 currently at the illegal encampment there off of Ray, we're gonna need four locations. We can't meet that with this resolution. You're not solving problems with this resolution. In addition, your resolution, on the second line reads, whereas the role of the city council is set, or is to set homeless policy for Spokane, enact laws and fund budgets. How can you honestly support this new resolution when you aren't supporting and enforcing current laws, current ordinances, and current resolutions? The city council and the role of city council should be approving overall strategy and letting the city manage the details. We don't need more resolutions, we need more supportive action. So please, I beg you, vote no on this, support administration efforts, support our city, find real resolutions, not on paper, but in action. Thank you.
Thanks, Alicia. Next is Brianna Gorder, then Phil Altmaier, and then Judy, I believe, Luce.
Hello again, everybody. I just wanted to clarify really quickly. Is this loud? Am I too loud?
No, you're good.
Okay. There is nothing illegal about Camp Hope as it stands currently because of Martin v. Boise. Until there is a shelter capacity to meet the need of how many people are there, there is nothing illegal about that camp, just to clarify. So, when I was first homeless, I was the age of 16, and I could go into the details of that, but I don't feel like that's really necessary, because it should have never happened. That being said, I was told multiple times to seek shelter, and I never did, because all I felt was terror. There was just sheer terror to be in a room surrounded by a bunch of strangers. I did not feel safe. That being said, we have dozens of different services out there, we have different shelters out there, none of them cater to the common denominator that these folks suffer from, which is trauma. Most of the people that are at Camp Hope right now have too much trauma to seek shelter. That's why they're not going. So, we could, we do need a solution right now. I absolutely agree. However, look at what happened at the convention center. It didn't help. In fact, it got worse. And every single time we rush into a solution and bad things happen, the weight of that is carried on the homeless population. I'm gonna continue, like, sorry, I'm skipping ahead of myself here. I am not for or against the East Trent property. I think if operated correctly, I think it'll be a great thing. However, I am against rushing to a solution. So I support this resolution, however, the acre part is a little odd. It seems like a lot of us are kind of stuck on the language of the acre, the 100 beds per acre. But I'm gonna continue to advocate that city leadership discusses this with the service providers and the people with lived experience, and that the service providers work together to come to this solution, too, because we all have to do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Phil Altmaier, then Judy Luce, and then Jane, I'm not sure if I get their last name, but Gerina, something like that. Welcome, Phil.
President, council members. Incredible challenge you face, homelessness in our city. I was thinking tonight, I learned that trees help businesses, I learned that you honored small businesses this week. If you want to help businesses, the most important issue you can address is homelessness in our city. And I just want you to know, we operate four shelters, we operate them in neighborhoods and in commercial. I would choose commercial anytime over neighborhood. And I can tell you something else, we house up to 200 or more at different times, we have. It hasn't been a problem. We talk about jobs tonight. We placed 600 people on jobs this last year that came through our shelter. There's no better opportunity now for the homeless than today and job opportunities, but it's been addressed. Trauma, addiction is often the reason. And so, again, those issues have to be addressed. I think the system, you as a council, hold the power to impact what happens in our city. As already been mentioned many times, you maybe have the opportunity to open a shelter in a location on Trent. Where else are you gonna find shelters? Because every neighborhood says, what? Not in our backyard. I would suggest you could pass an ordinance that would protect shelters, that wouldn't allow sit, lie, parking in cars in an area around that shelter, so the neighbors can function with their business or as a neighborhood. That's been done in other cities. That would help you locate some shelters. It could be easily done. And I want to suggest that a lot of what we're talking about, it's not just low barrier, high barrier, a lot of what we're talking about is how a shelter is run, whether it becomes a safe place and helps the people and environment where people are encouraged out of homelessness. And if you look at our current system, I would challenge the city council to look at our current system. We have a broken system. We reward all of the wrong behaviors and provide the best housing, a roof over people's heads, not to people that want to move out of homelessness, but people that are stuck making the wrong decisions, they go to the front of the line. If you want to change the system, start rewarding those people that are making the right decisions, moving in the right direction. Because after all, that's what we're saying we want to do through low barrier to bridge shelter and on out. So look at the big picture of the system. You have over 600 apartments available to encourage people to move out of homelessness, and I would encourage you to look at the big picture, not just this. But I, I think this is, I'm glad you moved to a recommendation, but I think there's a lot better things that could be done than this. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Judy Luce, and then Jane, and then Doug Yost.
Good evening, President and council members. Judy Luce, I'm from Medical Lake. And I used to like to come to downtown. I really thought it was very welcoming 10 years ago. But it's, it's kind of hard to bring my friends or their kids downtown to see graffiti on the walls of businesses and trash collecting, and people sleeping on the sidewalks, and urine stains on the sidewalks. Our city council has the ability to empower our law enforcement officers and city workers and others to do what is necessary to keep our downtown and others to do what is necessary to keep our downtown streets clean and guide the less fortunate to services. And I implore you to promote responsibility, even among those that are homeless, to encourage them. And I think the health and safety of everyone in our community demands that action. I implore the city council to vote no on the resolution to limit shelter capacity and move forward with the Shelter on Trent. And please help Spokane be a healthy and safe city for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Next, Jane. And if you could introduce yourself so I know how to pronounce your name. And then Doug Yost, and then Chad Wendell.
I'm Jane Krishan, and I actually live in the county, but I own property in the city. And I've been a landlord for right on 40 years. So I've been around low-income housing, higher-income housing, industrial, many things, mobile home parks. The thing that I think that we need to do with our homeless is we need to identify who's who. And we need to actually have them, I'm going to say register. I don't know that, I don't know that I have that right word. But if people are going to come to shelters or even not come to shelters and need services to get food and everything else, they should be registered so we can identify what our problem is and make it so that nobody's in a situation where they're not comfortable. I think that we should have not big dorms. I think big dorms are a big problem because nobody can feel like they own anything. And I think if we can get people identified to the services that they need, then those services, they can be put in the place that best fits that. I think that one of the biggest groups that's growing in homelessness is the youth. I'm a foster parent, and kids, when they leave the system or turn, well, when they're 18, they're not allowed to do anything. They're not allowed to work many places. They're, they're subject to maybe having in a house that they're 16 and 18 years old and they're in with eight and 10-year-olds. And so they get the rules of an eight and 10-year-old. So they've got no experience. They become 18, and then they have this opportunity to get funds for the next three years, provided that they're either looking for a job, getting education, or handling dependency or mental health issues. And they can get their check until they're 21. So then their 21st birthday comes, and there was no training for the people who were supposed to be helping them between the 18 and 21-year-old and giving them the life experiences and pushing them towards jobs or pushing them towards education. They were just housed again. So now they're 21, and they're full grown adults, right? That are 15 years old in their heads. And so we need to look at that portion of the system because foster care is a big part of our homeless population. It's one of the biggest inputs to it.
I bet you're at the end of your time today.
Whoops.
Jane. But thank you so much for coming down and sharing with us.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Next is Doug Yost, and Chad Wendell, and Roxanne Layton.
Hi, I'm Doug Yost with Coles Company. And I just want to say with regard to the resolution, I'd encourage you to vote no on it for a couple of reasons. With limiting capacity, it's been stated numerous times, it's hard enough to find shelters, it's hard enough to go find a situation that will work in the community. And two, restrict the number of beds in that facility just doesn't make a lot of sense in this situation, even though it's a recommendation. My past experience is resolutions tend to get used as ordinances sometimes, and, and you still have to challenge them, and it sets a precedent. And so I would encourage you not to move forward with this resolution in its current state and to strongly support the facility out in Trent. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Chad Wendell, Roxanne Layton, and then Russell Neff.
Hi, good evening, Council President Beggs and council members. Thanks for the opportunity to share. I want to thank the five of you. Five of you responded to an email that I had sent out, so thank you to those five that did regarding this, this resolution. I'm urging you to vote no on Resolution 202243, which is establishing operational and additional facility requirements for low-barrier shelter investments. At the heart of my objection, as well as the hundreds of other businesses and property owners in the, in the city, is that city council must stay in their own lane and quit overstepping their legislative duties as they micromanage the administration with the reactive policies such as this resolution versus the proactive policy that needs to be done. As stated by Paul Webster in the Hello for Good study, professional study on homelessness that was presented to you in January, the region's housing-centric approach has failed to reduce the number of individuals living on the streets and provide critical treatment for the unhoused with serious mental illness and substance use disorders. I encourage city council to look at the objectives and needs of the whole community and match with the outcomes being produced by the continuum of care and homeless service providers. Currently, there's a huge mismatch between policy and outcomes. An example of a proactive policy that council could address is an overhaul of the HMIS system so that accurate data and performance metrics ensure the efforts are achieving desired results. By creating another reactive policy such as this proposed resolution, council is both restricting the mayor's ability to address homelessness as well as not balancing a social contract where the community is effectively providing for those most vulnerable on our Spokane streets. A proactive approach requires a balanced, compassionate application of treatment, housing options, local ordinances, regulating public spaces, and effective programs. Please move from this reactive policymaking to proactive policymaking by voting no on the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. And Roxanne Layton, Russell Neff, and then Tyler, and I'm not quite reading the last name, but hopefully there's only one Tyler in the room.
Hi, Roxanne Layton, Spokane, Washington. Thank you for letting me share and give you my opinion about the homelessness situation in our community. The last two Mondays I have been here, I've heard folks get up and speak. Some say half-truths and false information, so please don't just believe me or disregard me, do your own research. Most of the time, the news media and political socialists are telling us that the homeless are people who are just down on their luck. And sometimes that's true for a small group of them. The majority of homeless in our area are in their predicament because of addiction and/or mental illness. So it's not just a homelessness problem, it's an addiction problem causing homelessness. Up until now, the only solutions being presented are not addressing the root of the problem, but just a rearranging of the same old failed strategies. The idea of giving housing to the homeless struggling with addiction will just turn out like the projects in other cities. Within a short time, those social giveaway schemes turned into dangerous, drug and crime-infested areas, with the only solution being to tear them down. The project that was in Baltimore, Old Lafayette Courts, was torn down August 20th, 1995, due to sufficiently high crime. New Orleans Desire Projects were torn down in stages in 1996, 1998, and the final shutdown in 2001 due to crime and drugs. The project Chicago Housing Authority was gradually torn down and completely dissolved by 2011 due to crime, drugs, corruption, and mismanagement. So what do I think we should do instead? I don't have all the answers, but I think if we actually listen to our homeless about these issues of addiction and mental illness, which are the root of homelessness, we will get a sense of how to truly help them, rather than just throwing taxpayer money and more money at building whatever the homeless activists are demanding at that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Roxanne. Russell Neff, then Tyler, and then Christopher Bell.
Good evening, Spokane City Council members. Our city is in crisis, that's an understatement. Mayor Nadine Woodward and homelessness activists or advocates have identified this site for a shelter that will fit the needs of hundreds of individuals experiencing homelessness. And yet, you, the council, continues to move the goalpost. That, that was mentioned before by another gentleman. You failed to pass a rezoning ordinance saying you didn't get enough notice, and then at the same, on the same breath, you begin to rush through a resolution that would hinder progress in addressing the homelessness crisis. These games are unacceptable. I'm urging every city council member to vote no on Resolution, Resolution 2022-0043. This resolution would make it more difficult for our city's administrators to fulfill the mission of seeking additional low-barrier shelter beds in addition to delaying the enforcement of our laws. Also, I would like to note that we need to make sure that personal financial gain for people that are pushing for yes votes on these, on this, be assessed, because sometimes people are looking for opportunities for their own financial gains. Thank you.
Thank you, Russell. Tyler? All right. And Tyler, please introduce yourself so I can get your last name right. And then Christopher Bell after Tyler, and then Christian McKinney.
Members of the Spokane City Council, thank you for the opportunity to share my experiences and my thoughts. My name is Tyler Giuliani, and I live in the Logan neighborhood. Like you, I'm deeply concerned about the health and the safety of all of our citizens in Spokane, including those who are homeless. What is happening downtown in our streets and tent cities, it is unacceptable. Please stop moving the goalpost of the administration. Please work together to find solutions. Instead of political posturing and finger pointing, I urge you all to vote no on Resolution 22-43 tonight. We need more beds for those who are suffering from homelessness, and this resolution is not the answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler. Christopher Bell, Christian McKinney, and then Hallie Burchinall. Is Christopher here? Not seeing Christopher. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for letting me come speak. My name's Christian McKinney. And first of all, I want to be clear that I just think we should urge and support and fund any efforts to providing as much safe shelter as we can for people who are in need right now. That's one reason I'm torn on this resolution, just like I think a lot of people are. However, I did participate in the point in time count, and I can echo previous comments that a lot of people are just really scared of a mass shelter situation. I also work as a case manager at Transitions Home Yard Cottages, and I think that gives me a little bit of unique insight into this multiple units concept. For one thing, our property is a little bit different than, say, the proposed shelter model for a few reasons. One is that we're using some slightly larger, more house-like cottages. And the second reason being that it's designed for a potential permanent solution for these people. But that being said, I think I've just perceived some things that are really helpful in this setting. One is just that it works. All of our residents came to us out of homelessness. And since we opened in 2018, I think we've only had two evictions and are, we've just been overall able to interact very peaceably with the neighborhood with only minimal conflicts through our HR department. Yeah, the people there are able to have a relative amount of stability. I think a big part of this is the community emphasis. So even though these people are individually housed in their own space, they're within a supportive community, which is really empowering to them, gives them the ability to reach out and support each other toward their goals, as well as having the case management on-site and support from outside resources. One thing we didn't notice during COVID is that that community kind of tanked. I think we've all experienced that. And we've kind of been rebuilding from the ground up, and it's been really challenging. I think that a lot of us know that building community is a lot harder than building a shelter. So I think my last point is I don't want us to overlook what I think is the most precious resource that we're working with here. I don't think it's the money. I think it's the community momentum and effort that we're already seeing surrounding this Camp Hope site and what's happening there. Doesn't mean that everything's perfect, but when you look at this site, we see housed people and unhoused people working together, brainstorming together, caring for each other, connecting to services together, cleaning up together. And just, yeah, it's kind of like a rare event to see unhoused people collaborating and service providers collaborating in this way. And I don't think any of us want that to fall through the cracks. So that doesn't mean it's the perfect solution. And like I said, I think we should support any methods to get people housed. But yeah, I just think these people care. I think that any project that wants to succeed needs people and energy. And where are they right now? I think they're surrounding Camp Hope and what's happening there. And other people care, but I don't know if they care as much as Julie and the people that we actually see doing this work on a daily basis without having the city's support yet. So I would just encourage us all to consider funneling resources toward efforts where there's already this motivation, potential energy that's going toward a good cause. So thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, Christian. Hallie Burchinall. After Hallie is Tachana Skripnik, and then Chuck Teegarden.
Hi, everyone. I'm glad to be here tonight, and I'm grateful that I'm one of the later speakers so that I could hear everybody else that had to share as well. I have a couple of things I want to do to share. I think knowledge is power. So when we talk about homelessness and what causes homelessness, I would love to share with you from the National Law Center on Homeless Poverty, its Homelessness in America Overview of Data and Causes, top five reasons for homelessness. One is lack of affordable housing. Two, unemployment. Three, poverty. Number four is mental illness and the lack of needed services. And number five is substance abuse and the lack of needed services. So I just think it's really important to stay focused on the truth of that matter. I had spoke a couple of weeks back, brought up a book called Tip 55 Through SAMSA. It is behavioral health services for people who are homeless. And I think there's a couple of important points from that when we were looking at this. And I think it's critical to the work that you're doing, so that's why I'm sharing. I think you've got a building block, and I think that the solution is in us all coming forward together, administration, council, service providers, boots-on-the-ground folks, and continuing to do these building blocks. So of people who are homeless and in substance use treatment, 68% of men and 76% of women reported experiencing a trauma-related event. Outreach plays a crucial role in working with people who are experiencing homelessness. And people who are homeless typically engage gradually with services as trust is established. And that, I think, is super pertinent to this conversation. I listened to the major talk about the Way Out Shelter, and we have navigated a number of our folks into the Way Out Shelter from compassionate addiction treatment. And what's happening over there is really awesome. But the reality is that what's happening there is happening due to the relationships that have formed prior to entering there. People are stabilizing. And so it's a skewed number. You can't use that number to measure what happens in a low-barrier shelter where relationships haven't been formed yet. I think that it's really important to stay focused on our need for holistic partnerships, that all of us that work together come to the table. I really hope that rather than siloing it, as many people have talked about, let the administration do their thing, we really do all have to come to the table if we're going to find solutions. And I can see the yellow light is on. So I'm
You've got 30 seconds.
Going to, I'm going to just stop there because I'll just dive into another big topic. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Hallie. All right, Tachana Skripnik? All right. Not seeing Tachana.
Mr. President, members of the council, I'm Chuck Teegarden. I'm the executive director of Communities and Schools of Spokane County. We've been working with homeless families and homeless kids consistently for a number of years. We are located in the Tapio Center. We've had the same experience as my colleague who spoke earlier about vandalism, break-ins, insecurity. My nonprofit, we doesn't have a lot of money. We put bars on our windows. We've installed an alarm system inside of our building because if we get our stuff stolen, we don't have the money to replace it. But more importantly, I have to be concerned about my staff all the time. My employees have to escort them out in the evening, especially when it's dark. Beyond that, one of the things that bothers me more than any of that is the fact that this issue has caused this division between the council and the mayor. The elephant in this room is the state of Washington. They own that property. The revised code of Washington says they're responsible for that mess out there. They're responsible, not the city of Spokane. And you all have taken it, this issue is your issue. And you know what? You probably will be the ones that end up cleaning it up. But the fact of the matter is, is there should be some effort to go after the state of Washington on a couple of fronts. Not the least of which is they've also reserved authority for mental health treatment in the state. Is there anybody going out there on behalf of the state of Washington to provide case management services to these folks who have mental illness or addiction problems? I don't know. The state of Washington is also creating an unsanitary premise, which is specifically addressed in the revised code of Washington. Where is illegal action against the state of Washington? They are at the base of this particular issue. And I don't know why the taxpayers of Spokane and the city government has to be the ones who bear the brunt of this. I don't think it's reasonable, and you all are, I hope, going to have an opportunity to collaborate with the mayor and get on with this, okay? Because it's hard to live with. It's hard to live with, and it's hard on the folks that are living it. So thank you very much. Please collaborate with each other, and don't get on each other's case about this. Let's solve this problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. And that is our last public commentary on this resolution. I'll turn it over to... Before I do, though, I just wanted to thank everybody for your participation. You handled your testimony very well, orderly, and let everyone talk and do that. So I really appreciated that. It makes a difference for all of us, so thank you. Council members. Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, so I guess just a few things. I shared quite a few thoughts last week, but I'll just reiterate a couple of things. So first of all, I think there's a number of items that are missing from the list, and then some things that are a little too strict. I mean, the obvious is the limitation on capacity, and I think that's going to put us in a situation where a couple of things could happen. One, we're going to end up vastly underutilizing the Trent site, which will be not good for taxpayers. We're going to have to find three, four, five, six different sites, which won't be good for taxpayers or the neighborhoods, because that's where they'll have to go. The city has looked at 92 different sites, and this has been sort of the best of the least-worst options that are out there, and it sucks. As I think Councilmember Bingle and myself have said, you know, we hate the fact that we have to put another, you know, shelter in our district, where we have a high saturation of them. But again, it's sort of the best option that we have right now, and the city has been looking for well over a year or around a year at different options, and we haven't come up with any. So first, I think the 100 limit needs to go away. I think we should leave it to the operator to determine kind of the best practice for the facility. And second, I think we need to include some other provisions in here without some form of a good neighbor agreement, good neighbor policies that have teeth, that the city is prepared to enforce. I don't believe we should consider for one second citing shelters in residential or commercial. And that's the reason for the zoning change in industrial, is to enable that as an option for us for where we would cite shelters. And so if we're not going to get something with teeth that the city can enforce on a good neighbor agreement that would put everybody at ease, and I'm certainly open in participating in those conversations, until or unless that happens, we should not put these high-impact facilities next door to our single-family, multifamily, commercial zones. That just doesn't make any sense. I am certainly open to the idea of tiny homes, tiny villages. I am pushing for us to consider a tiny lot development code. I think we need to consider this as a fairness for everybody. There's a lot of building codes, energy codes, which this council considers sacrosanct, that we would have to suspend to make that happen. And so we should allow the potential for that for anybody who wants to live in a tiny home. And so I want fairness, and I think that there's an opportunity for that. And so I've asked for us to include that on the work plan for our plan commission, to develop a tiny lot development code. I think that would be actually a really good idea for the city. We need capacity for those individuals, as has been mentioned many times tonight, there at the illegal camp in East Central. There has been a 56% increase in crime. That's according to our chief of police, as a result of that camp. And the businesses around there are just getting impacted by that. And we have an opportunity to cite this shelter and have a place for many of those individuals to go, for the city to enforce many of the laws that we have not enforced for three, four years, and provide an access point for many of those individuals to go to services. And so it just doesn't make sense that we would overly limit this to the point where we simply can't set up a shelter, because that's probably what's going to happen, is the administration's going to come back with a recommendation that violates this, and the council will either vote for it, in which case this will have been worthless, or they don't, in which case we have no shelter, or they'll spend the next six months, year, two years, looking for multiple sites and neighborhoods, and they'll come back probably without something that we can agree to then, because there'll be some pretty upset neighbors when we do come back with that. So there really is no great option, but this is the best of the options that we have right now. There are plans in place for wraparound services, storage, pets. There's a lot of consideration like that at the Trent site. And so I think that passing this ordinance, creating these limitations, delaying what is an urgent need is just not the right move for right now. So I am a no on this resolution.
Thank you, Councilmember Cathcart. Councilmember Shatten.
Thanks to everybody for showing up and for all of your input. As I was sitting here listening, I can't help but think that we all want the same thing. And it's unfortunate that this has gotten to be such a confusing process. But I'm going to go way back and just say that when this came up, we've all been working very closely, trying to get some parameters around safe shelters for our homeless population. But here's what I think people don't know, and I want to share this because I think it's important. I visited the... I did the tour of the site on April 1st, and I asked several questions regarding wraparound services. So we talk about, yeah, wraparound services, that was what you heard. I got nothing on wraparound services. I have no information on what people are thinking about wraparound services, what are the best wraparound services to look at. I have no idea of costs for improvements of that building. When I went in the building, the first thing I thought of was they need restrooms. There are no bathrooms on this cement floor. I was told that we were going to have porta-potties, and that just kind of freaked me out a little bit, I'll be honest. So I have no idea about that. I have no information regarding costs, regarding the lease, any of that. I also, at the point that I toured, I asked if the neighboring businesses were going to be consulted, just professional courtesy, let's talk to the businesses so they know. I said that was in process. Last week, or it could be the week before, we had the president of SEC sitting right here, who would be a great partner for job training possibilities, right? He had no idea that this was happening seven minutes from his college campus. This weekend, I heard from the railroads. The railroad has not been talked with, and there's some valid safety issues that they have that they want to talk about. So a lot of this has been just a lack of communication, and I'm not going to blame anybody, because we're not here to blame people. We're here to find a solution. But those of us sitting up here, that made that... The two of us that made that vote on the zone change, in my very logical mind, I thought, how can I take this vote on a zone change when I don't even know what it is we're doing with this building? How can I say, sure, let's go ahead and approve this, when I don't even know what's in the lease? One day, I was told $20,000 a month, and this week, it's $34,000 a month. And the most frustrating thing for me is it was two weeks ago. I didn't know that... I've written this down, because people keep saying, Nadine Woodward and homeless advocates. I don't know who that is, because no homeless advocates that I have talked to have had discussions with the mayor's office. So I go out for coffee last week, and I run into Chris Patterson, who's been a great help and has really kind of walked me through some issues when he was here at the city. And it wasn't until I was talking to him that I knew Hello for Good was providing information to the mayor. So I went, okay, so I know we're not walking down this road blind. We've got somebody that has some experience that's telling the administration what we need in this building. But I just want to say, for everybody that has taken the time and the spirit to come down here, we understand, and we care about making this decision, but it's got to be the best decision. One more thing. I was out this weekend and talking to people, and I had somebody come up and say, you guys need to pass this. The mayor needs a win. And it just struck me as odd, because I thought, this isn't about the mayor. This isn't about the council. It's not about politics. This is about homeless people who, unfortunately, we have to hit this head-on and deal with this. So please know, none of us are doing this to get ahead. None of us are doing this to be political. And frankly, I've heard it a couple of times, and I just have to take a breath, because I think the mayor can stand on her own and move this forward and be successful doing it. She doesn't need a win. This is... We need to help the homeless people. I also want you to know that I've spent time at Camp Hope. I met a woman who was in her maybe 70s, mid-70s, elderly woman in a walker, sleeping in a tent, because the rent had gone up in her apartment, and she had nowhere else to go. I met a young man in his 20s, great young man, who, same thing. He had been... Had to leave his apartment, couldn't afford the rent, was living, you know, rent check by check, going to school and working, but needed a place to stay where he felt he was safe, which was Camp Hope, and he needed money for his medications. There was... I was never... Nobody was disrespectful to me. People were taking care of each other. You could see that there was a lot of empathy that that population had for each other. So we're not dealing with... And I know, I know a certain percentage, we're never going to be able to help, but we really have to stick together on this and work together to get this done. So my only frustration in all of this has been the lack of communication. And I'm not going to blame anybody. I guess I could have gotten up and walked across the hall and said, what are we doing for, you know, what kind of improvements are we making on this building? But there literally has not been a lot of discussion. We were told tonight that we would have a discussion earlier with CHHS. That didn't happen, and I have to tell you that that's not the first time that's happened, where something's been scheduled and it gets canceled. So if I sound frustrated, I am, because I think we're all really good people, and we're just trying to get to a place where we can agree. What Councilmember Kinnear did, she's been talking to all of us. One of the things I said was, I don't know about that woman in Camp Hope in a walker being taken over to Trent, and here you go, you're safe. What can... What other resources do we have for people? And we had a brisk conversation about, boy, that Trent building would be great for job training with the community colleges. We could do some job training programs. I've also heard that we don't have a detox center anymore. Maybe we could use that for detox. So we all along have been talking about that building as if we're moving forward with it. We just don't have the information that we need to make that decision, and people need to know how much that's going to cost. I've also said to many of the downtown businesses and partners that have contacted me saying we need to do this, how are we going to pay for all of this? What are the partnerships? Are there opportunities? I don't know, because we've not had those conversations. So Councilmember Kinnear simply was looking at conversations that we've all had to say, well, we should at least put down some of our priorities that we've been talking about. Let's do this. She wasn't doing it to undermine or throw anybody under the bus or start another issue. It was simply, these are the priorities I'm hearing, and as we move forward, we're probably going to need a couple more shelters. That's what this is about tonight, and I want to thank her, because she really took the time to talk to all of us to get ideas of what we thought would be a great shelter. So I'm going to shut up. I'm pleased and proud that you're all here. I think we are all working in the same direction, but we got to talk and, you know, get that communication out there, because it hasn't been there. I'll do better, but that's just... I feel bad, because we haven't moved very far forward because of the lack of communication, and hopefully that will change. I don't know, but we need to do that. So thank you, and thanks for letting me ramble.
Thanks, Councilmember. Other council commentary?
Well, I'll go, since Councilmember Stratten said a lot of what I was going to say. Someone had mentioned, this has been year over year over year, the homeless issue. And part of it is because we've been asking for a plan. Since I've been on council, just give us a plan. We could have worked through it. From a national homeless organization, best practices is like, we know we need it, we want to support it, we want to fund it, we want the best outcomes. But I too said, well, give me some dollar numbers to work with. As a business owner, I just can say yes, and how am I going to sustain it? We can do it this year, but what about next year? And what about the year after that? Because this city does have some financial challenges coming up. Y'all may not know that, but we certainly do on this side. The other issue is, it is communication, the providers. Last week, we didn't know who the provider was going to be. That kind of all blew up, and most of council members didn't have any idea what was going on behind the scenes. It's like, whoa, we didn't know that was happening. Nobody told us. And then we have current providers who are out there who are saying they are willing to expand their capacity. They haven't been asked, and there's no consistent funding for them. So we can't fund the ones we got now who are willing to expand, bring something else online. We don't know how we're going to fund that. I look forward to the partnership with Holol for Good. They're new in this arena. I'm glad the businesses have stepped up, because the city can't do it by itself, but we don't really know what their plan is either to partner with the city going forward. What will that look like? And also, there was all these, well, we're going to do this, we're going to do this, we're going to do this, and we're going to do this. But they were just words. There were no MOUs. I didn't even see any narrative or conversations that even happened. So then, was that going to just all happen after they got in the building? And what if nobody wanted to partner with them once they got in the building? Then where was that going to leave us? So it's not about voting against downtown or not voting for our citizens. It really is a partnership, and this position of it has to be one or the other. It's not a good place for us to be. I haven't really heard the word collaboration very much tonight, but we're willing to go there. I certainly am, and everybody else can step up. I also can tell you, anybody can start a shelter. Does not have to be the city. There are providers out there who started their own shelters, who are doing great work. Thank you, Julie. Thank you, Hope House. Thank you, Transitions. Thank you, Salvation Army. Thank you, House of Charities. Those were not started by the city. Those were started by independent providers who saw a need, was committed, and stepped into that space and started doing the work. So no, it's not all on the city to solve this problem alone. And again, some of your suggestions, we've talked about a key code, how to help identify homeless people and give them something we can keep track of, a partnership with a library. They trust the library. So we could do that. Some other things that were mentioned, we've talked about doing that also, but it had not gotten any traction. So we legislate and we fund, but we don't have the teeth to move it forward. I can't give them a ticket, and I can't fine them for not doing the work. So I don't want to do that. I just want to work with them in a good line of communication and bring those providers to the table, because they really haven't been asked. And how about we identify the provider, and then the provider works with us on finding a shelter space, because they will know what's needed to actually execute the work that we're trying to get done. Those are just some things I've been thinking about. Am I against the one on Trent? No. No, that wasn't my vote. My vote was, I needed more information. And tonight, thank you all, but I still need some more information.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilkerson. Next?
Double Z, so I'm just used to waiting to my turn. Thank you all for coming. I know a lot of you have been paying attention for a while, so I wasn't here last week because I was at the Spokane Scholars Dinner, which was arranged a year ago. And I think it's really important to make clear that council has done nothing to slow down the process of opening a new shelter. There has been no proposal brought forward to council, there has been no contracts, no lease, there has been nothing that has come forward to us that we are slowing down. In fact, I think it's important that we're actually helping the process and showing collaboration by this is what we are standing for and putting forward for our vision. It just happens that when more than two or three, or more than three of us agree on something, we have to have a whole meeting and agree on it. So this is our way to collaborate, to tell the administration, look, this is the vision and guidelines we're giving you, so that when you put out an RFP, this is what we're hoping is going to be in it. Instead, an RFP was put out without our input, without provider input, and we gave one-off input, but that was not incorporated into an RFP. So I think that this resolution, thanks to council members for bringing it forward, allows us to say, this is where we're coming from and the guidelines we're hoping you put in a future RFP. I also think it highlights a more holistic approach. Instead of just a one-off shelter that we're hoping will solve homelessness, Shelter on Trent is not going to solve homelessness in Spokane. It is not even going to allow us to clear a camp because it doesn't have enough capacity. Rather, it is a step forward, and we're all agreeing on something, we need another shelter. We're agreeing on the next steps. So this resolution calls for a shelter and says this is the vision that we have for what a shelter should look like, based on best practices. It also says, let's start looking at pallet houses and vehicle parks. This is other things that we need in our whole system. We're doing another resolution next week that's going to talk about permanent supportive housing and rapid capital acquisition. That can get up to another 500 beds in our city. And that stuff that we're saying, we need to be doing this now. No proposals have come to council on that. We're saying, please take these actions now. Some of the concerns that I think this proposal or this resolution addresses is around size. We know that there's potential problems with warehousing peoples together, whether those are people with substance abuse and mental health issues, or they're people that are students. And if you take a whole high school or a whole middle school and stick them in a warehouse together, you're going to have problems. So I think this resolution is saying, hey, we recognize there's going to be problems, and we want to prevent those from happening to save us money in the long term to make it more successful. We hear a lot from people in the homeless community who have that lived experience, who say, I don't want to go to a warehouse, I don't want to be there. I know, last week Dale posed a question, where would we go if we ended up homeless? Would we want to go to a warehouse that's large? Or would I go to, and if you didn't have support at home or someone to turn to, where would you go? I wouldn't probably go to a large warehouse, I'd probably sleep in my car first until I had to, or somewhere else, and find a community that can support me. So I think that this lays out those options, because we need lots of different options for a large system. A lot of people complain about some of our larger low-barrier shelters already in town. A 250-plus location would be almost twice as big as House of Charity. And there's already talk about trying to move House of Charity because it is an issue in our community. So we don't want to set up a problem for the future. I also think it's important to go the capacity thing that Councilmember Cathcart talked about, and underutilizing the space. We can't force people to go to the shelter. There's nothing that says you have to go there. And if the community is telling us, we don't want to go to this building, and we're saying it's going to, we're going to staff it for a large number of people, you're all just going to start coming here, it doesn't look like that's going to be the reality. And so it's going to be fiscally more responsible for us, it's going to get better services to folks, and be more successful in addressing people, getting them back on their feet into homelessness, or into permanent housing. So this, again, I think lays out that vision for where council is coming from, and saying this is where we should be going. We still have a lot of details that we're looking for, to have the full picture on the Trent proposal, and I think we're all very excited to see what that proposal is going to be. And so this is helping that process move forward, and I know that there's a lot of tension around this, and it's good to see the communities coming together, because this is growth from where even both sides have been in the past. So I think this is a step in the right direction.
Thank you, Councilmember Bingle.
I've heard a couple times complaints on the lack of action from the administration and that we haven't received proposals from the administration, but I think we have the city administrator back here. Johnny, would you mind coming up here and just sharing with us some of the action that has been taken on behalf of the administration and some of the proposals that you've given?
Thank you, Councilmember Bingle, Council President Beggs, members of the City Council, Johnny Perkins, city administrator. First of all, I want to acknowledge UGM, Phil Altmaier, Danny Beard, who are here tonight, as well as part of that great collaboration of providers we have that Councilmember Wilkerson mentioned. Having said that, I just wanted, as it relates to the RFP, the RFP is being reissued. There were some concerns last week with third-party potential undue influence and breach of the integrity of the process and some conflicts of interest. So in fairness to the providers who had submitted proposals, in fairness to those who are intended to assist and support, and specifically in fairness to the taxpayers of Spokane, the decision was made by the mayor and the administration to redo the RFP, if you will, we're making some changes to it, we're doing some modifications to that document before it goes out in all likelihood next week, and then that process will move forward again. As it relates to the discussion with the surrounding businesses and the community, do we need to do a better job? Absolutely. I said that a week or two ago, same thing. We reached out to a number of immediate businesses within the general area of the facility. I visited 10, one of my colleagues, Mr. Finch, who's the Director of Neighborhood Housing Human Services, went to a similar number. We started with that and are now reaching out more. Do we need to get to more? Should we have got to more? Absolutely. And we're doing that now. In fact, I have a meeting tomorrow afternoon with the Spokane Community College Chancellor and President to go through and discuss some of their concerns. I've also been talking to some of the surrounding businesses about some of the things that we can do to support them as it relates to some of their questions and concerns, and we're going to continue to do that. And as I said, do we have to do more and do we need to do better? Yes, and absolutely on both of those. In terms of the lease, we are in negotiations with the property owner. Next meeting with them is tomorrow, and so I'll be in on that. Trying to work through some of the terms and some of the financial elements of it in terms of the tenant improvements. I committed last time I was here that we would come back, actually at this council meeting, and announce who the RFP selection was, announce what the cost is going to be for the shelter, and hopefully have some progress on the lease. When we had concerns last week with the integrity of the RFP process, we put a temporary halt on that presentation this evening, so that's why CHHS is not here to provide that information. But I will commit to you, next Monday, we will be in front of you to give you a summary of the financials in terms of the dollars we have, what we potentially believe the cost estimate, cost estimate may be, some of the dollars that you've already approved through various other actions. We will identify where those dollars are coming from, and then how those might be used based on cost estimates of what we, right now at this point, believe the RFP or the operation of the shelter will be. The shelter itself, the idea is to have, as Councilmember Cathcart mentioned, that wraparound services component. So this RFP that's going out next week will include the information on the selected operator, as well as an operator for the services of providing the wraparound services, which would be your mental health, which would be your drug addiction, which would be your job training, your education, maybe a veterans component and a number of others. And that's one of the areas I will be discussing with the community college tomorrow. As a community college product myself, I'm very high on what the community college system can do. So tomorrow will be that conversation, how do we engage them in that education part? Should we have done that a lot earlier? Absolutely, and I'm going to own that right now. We should have gotten out there much sooner, and we're well behind the curve, and I realize that. So we're going to continue to work towards that. Lastly, let me close and say, on behalf of the mayor, we very much appreciate the continued collaboration with this council. We appreciate the questions, we appreciate the same commitment and energy and passion that we're bringing to address the issue of homelessness in Spokane, and we're not going to give up or quit until we move a system forward that will truly allow those to move into areas of their life that they'd like to see improved, rather, education, job, housing, and other elements. Councilmember Bingle, thank you, sir.
Don't go too far. Don't go too far.
Yeah.
Do you have more?
Yeah, but if you have questions, feel free to jump in, I'm happy to go afterward.
Well, I'll jump in a little bit, and then you can go next.
Sounds good.
Well, can I just ask one?
Absolutely.
So I just want to reiterate again that council has not been obstructionist. We just heard city administrators say that they had a number of challenges that had nothing to do with this council going forward. So that narrative out there that we're trying to stop the process or not give the mayor a win or whatever it is, that is absolutely not true.
Quickly on that point, I would disagree that we have not created more barriers by us voting down a zoning change. We did make it more difficult for the city to sign a lease. If we were going to sign a lease before the zoning was changed, that wouldn't make any sense. And so by us voting down a zoning change, nobody's going to sign a lease before that. So I believe that some of our actions have created more barriers for our city and for the administration on top of the other challenges that they already have.
Well, the biggest barrier is simply suggesting that we limit it to 100 when the plan is 250. I mean, that in itself is a barrier, so that stops all progress.
I got to push back. So the lease wasn't ready when they brought the zoning. And my request was, could we have a package deal? The lease was still in discussion, it was nowhere near ready, and I don't know if it's really anywhere ready today, other than you're going to have a meeting tomorrow with the owner of that. So that was my request. If you're going to do all these things, why are you bringing it to us piecemeal? Why don't you give us a total package so we could really look at it and digest it and then make a decision going forward? But zone change here, lease over here, provider over here, and we never saw the big picture. So that's just my challenge, and we can agree to disagree, but that's where I was sitting at last week.
Well, Councilmember Wilkerson, the elements do include the zoning ordinance change, they do include the selection of the provider, which, I just have to be really frank, there was some undue third-party influence. We could have been here this evening to give you both the financial picture and the RFP selection, but because of that undue third-party influence, we decided in the best interest of those who submitted proposals and the taxpayers of Spokane, not to move it forward at that time. So that's the delay on those two pieces. The lease, if you've ever negotiated a commercial lease, it's not an easy endeavor, it takes time, and there's various elements and components. This particular lease involves tenant improvements. And so as we've identified what those improvements are, and we're identifying what those costs are, now we're whittling down, how does that look into the overall picture of what the monthly lease will look like? And then how many years would we present to you to engage in said lease and keep this facility running?
So I'll ask again, was the RFP process debacle, was that council's issue that held us up? I would say no.
Oh, my turn. All right. So Mr. Perkins, once again, thank you. We're not talking about the Trent location here tonight. That is not what this is about. It says very clearly that this is any future, any future low-barrier shelter. So when we came up with some of these, these are all items that we've discussed with you individually. We've talked about wraparound services, we've talked about pallets, and as the mayor has. So these aren't new items that we just pulled out of the air. And so when you're talking about the wraparound services and the things you're going to have at the Trent site, that's all great, but I'd never heard that you say all of those things. I hadn't heard about places for animals, I hadn't heard separate spaces for couples or partitioning things off. So these are the first time, this is the first time I've heard about that. But this is not about the Trent shelter. I think we can all agree that we all think, we got to do something, we have to have something now. We're still waiting for a lease, we're still waiting for a provider, we're still waiting for all those costs. And I think I would challenge anybody who's a business owner, you would not approve something if you did not know the cost, and that's what we're dealing with right now. So for anybody out here to say, just approve the Trent shelter, well, at what cost? What is it going to cost us? We do not know. When we get that information, then we'll have a better idea. And we can disagree on zoning, you know, which comes first. I have a different opinion on that because I think zoning means heavy industrial throughout the city that we need to address, because as Mr. Cathcart said, we are not going to be able to cite future shelters in our neighborhoods or in commercial areas, that heavy industrial is kind of the last place. So I'm not really asking you a question, I'm just asking you to nod and agree with me.
Well, I guess I do want to add, and I'm going to agree partially with Council President Protem, every council member on the dais right now was brought on a tour, I believe, except for you, Council President Protem. So you did not hear that information, but I can attest to that your colleagues did hear everything I said. Specifically about the wraparound services, because I was on that tour with Mr. Finch when that was brought forward. We also brought in leadership of the Chief Gary Neighborhood Council, and we brought in members of the COC Board to tour the facility again to walk them through similar elements and components. And I would never have you approve the Trent site without having that lease in front of you and the cost. So I'm not here to ask for that tonight, that's not my charge.
Exactly. And thank you, and that is what I'm trying to impart upon the audience here tonight because not one of you would do that in good conscience, nor should you ask us to. We need to wait for the information and then evaluate it to see if it's something that we want to have taxpayers pay for, essentially. So, thank you, didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I kind of enjoyed it, so.
Anytime.
And I, can I continue?
Please, yes.
And I might come back after you. Again, this is about what, not about the Trent shelter, but moving forward, what is, what are additional shelters going to look like? What will additional space look like? And as somebody pointed out, 250 spaces is not enough. So we are going to continue to have this discussion about where to put additional shelters, what they look like, what kind of services, who they're serving. And as we heard tonight, collaboration with our service providers is integral if we're going to be successful. So in that regard, I want to thank Salvation Army for being here, bringing your folks, thank you for that. Phil Altmaier, thank you for coming, appreciate that. Julie, thank you, appreciate all you do, I know how hard, I don't know how hard it is, I can imagine how hard it is. So we appreciate all of you, and we want to continue to collaborate. I also heard somebody tell us that we should stay in our lane. Well, we're in our lane, and we are supposed to weigh in, we are supposed to make these sorts of decisions, we are collaborating with the mayor, we are not obstructing. I know we have a disagreement with the zoning, I don't want to talk about that right now. But we are, we're collaborating with the mayor and sharing things as we get them and ideas as they come up. This is not an easy thing to navigate through. It was going on long before this mayor was in place, and we're going to continue to struggle with this because as rents go up and as housing is tight, we're going to have people who are homeless. And I found out that there are some people who work for us at the city who are living in their cars because they're not making enough money. That is sad, and we all need to think about that. There are people that we know, friends of ours, might be our kid, might be our mom, our uncle, whatever, they aren't able to afford rent in our city, and that's just not okay. So as a community, I think we need to look at that and say, we need to do something about that as well. That is part of that piece. So I've gone on long enough, turn it back to you, Councilmember Bingle.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate that. So again, one of the things that I want to recognize is, Lori, I do appreciate, excuse me, Councilwoman Canair, I do appreciate all the effort that you put into this, Council President Beggs, I appreciate all the effort you put into this. There's, I agree with a lot that's in here, having flexible space, you know, dedicated wraparound service providers, independent security, onsite you know, dedicated wraparound service providers, independent security, onsite storage, you know, MOUs. I agree with most of this. I think the biggest area where we're just having our disagreement, like many said, is on the capacity. I'm really thankful that we switched it from requirements to recommendations. I think that's a good language change in there. But when it comes to the 100 shelter beds per acre, looking at this, if we just looked at a couple of the shelters that we have currently, if we looked at the Cannon Shelter, right now there's 72 to 80, up to 85 if we have flex capacity. If we did 100 per acre, that would be 16 people that could be in that space. House of Charity is well over 100. If we did it per acre, we'd be at 77 in that location. If we were to follow these best practices, what would end up happening is that we would have significantly more people that weren't in shelters, and they would have to move on. If we looked at 100 per acre, if we looked at the camp at the Wash Dot site, I mean, we would have to, we would have to move significantly the amount of people who are there if we were to go by this recommendation. And we have talked a lot about, you know, collaboration, and sometimes the sticking point is collaboration if they agree with us. And I know that we've done a lot of work to reach out. But there are a couple sticking points where it's, we're willing to collaborate if you agree with us on a certain point. One of the things I'd just like to point out as well is that we need to look at compared to what, I think, many times. So compared to what? You know, we all acknowledge that there's no perfect site. Compared to what? Sleeping outside versus sleeping inside. Compared to what? Food being provided in these shelters, or not as much food being provided to these individuals? Service providers onsite versus not? Security for vulnerable populations versus not? As we heard somebody talk today, you can't get sober when it's around you. So sober space versus not. I just think that when we're looking at this, limiting things to 100 beds per acre is going to create a significant amount of problems. And even though these are recommendations, these kinds of actions, these kinds of statements are made to then go back and say, well, we told them this. And the trouble is, is that, one of the things that we do need to realize, and another member said it tonight, is that we are in crisis now. The crisis now is that people are on the streets when they shouldn't be on the streets. We're in crisis. That surge capacity that we're talking about, we should be activating that surge capacity now, because we are in crisis. Limiting the Trent site to 100, or even, you know, 250, we're in crisis right now. We need to get people off the streets, out of the elements. And I understand the challenges that will come with that. You know, I understand the trust issues that many in that population have, because of trauma that people have mentioned. That trauma is real. Those trust issues are real. I get it. But we should at least have the ability to take somebody to a place where it can be safe, where there can be security, where there can be protection from predators and drug dealers who prey on their vulnerability. I think that if we were to follow this, I don't think that this would be a step forward, while as well-intentioned as this is, and as much effort has been put in on this, I think limiting the capacity to 100 would cause more problems than it solves. And that, in an ideal world, in a theoretical world, in a vacuum, that might absolutely be best practice. But we're not in a vacuum. We're not in a Houston. We're not in another community. We're in Spokane. And what I see right now is when we drive past, and I see 400 people on the streets, I don't know how we cannot move forward with something, and with sites that are legitimately addressing the crisis that we're in. And so I think that we should be, we should be acting like we're in a crisis, because we are. And I would like us to support that community in every way that we can. And slowing down shelters for, you know, small sticking points, slowing down shelters is just going to continue to perpetuate a problem that really needs action now.
All right. So one thing I just want to point out, as fiery as things have been, at least on social media, the last, we are way ahead of where we were last year, in a lot of ways. Last year, the dominant narrative out there on social media was, don't have low-barrier shelters. That was the truth, that people were saying, don't have them. And I was kind of only half joking with some reporters this week. I have been getting all these emails, open low-barrier shelters, from people who were against them last year. And so I'm like, we have come a long way. That's the thing. It's like, how many can we open? How fast? And the city's official policy last year around this time was trying to close even the low-barrier shelter beds that we had, and we closed 100 of them. And so to be arguing a little bit about whether we should have 100 or 200 people in a low-barrier shelter is a win to me. We're at a whole different place. People have come through, and it hasn't been by accident. People have been digging in. People who saw things differently dug in. They toured shelters. They talked to people. We've had people testify. All these different truths that we've heard tonight, we've been doing that for the last year, and people have changed their mind about what we need to do. Is everyone 100% on the same page? No. But everyone, for the most part, is agreed. We need way more low-barrier shelter beds, and have people safe, and give them the stability that they can gather their intestinal fortitude to move on into the lives that we all know that they can have. So we are in that place. We're, you know, if all we're arguing about is 100 beds per acre for a single story, you know, because you can work around this. The Trent Street could do this, but it's got plenty of room to have, comply with that recommendation. That's just all it is. That's what we're talking about. All these other recommendations, people seem to be for. And in fact, I'm very gratified that when we started this conversation just last Thursday about these ideas, the administration is already adjusting the RFP to put the wraparound services in the RFP. Because as you heard from some council members, it's one thing to say, oh, we could do wraparound services at the next shelter. It's something else to be in the RFP and say, no, what's your plan going to be? So we are moving forward in that direction. And again, it's been said before, but council and the mayor's office are working closely. Councilmember Kinnear and I meet weekly with the mayor and Johnny Perkins, like, how can we move these things forward? How can we get that zoning thing back and take care of that? How can we get a lease that's fair market value, that works? What's the best way to get a proposal from operators that's really going to work? And how fast can we get those tenant improvements? We are weeks out from getting a lease, from getting an operator agreement, from lots of weeks out from getting tenant improvement. So it's not a matter of we're going to be able to be moving people in next week. But we are so much closer than we have been. And I am just, I am thrilled about that, that we, as a community, have come together in so many more ways than not. And 100%, no. Does anyone have exclusivity on the truth in the exact best way? Not for all people, because it's different for each person and each group. And one thing I love about the providers that I've visited, just, I'm pretty sure every provider, and I've donated money to lots of the providers, they all have a different way of doing it, and they're all helping solve the problem. And we just need more of it. So I'm supporting this resolution tonight, just because it's more good things. There's really nothing in my mind that's objectionable. It can all be worked around to do it, even if, and it's certainly not about the Trent Street property. That's really not what this is about, as Councilmember Kinnear said, it says, for new ones that we get into. But it could be applied to that one as well, because the best practices should apply generally. And generally, we know that having smaller groups of people in areas works best. Are we in a crisis? If there's a smoke event or weather, do we need to cram hundreds of people to save their lives? Yes. And even without a severe weather crisis, ooh, can we push that a little bit at one particular property, because we really need to get people out of the weather safely, and it's not ideal? Of course. That's why these are recommendations. So I'm excited that we're moving ahead together as a city. And as galvanized as people are, that makes me very happy, because it's all for the same cause of getting people sheltered and getting their lives back. Prepare to vote.
Can I just?
Oh, go ahead.
I just want to say one thing. So Councilmember Bingle, if we look at the smaller shelters in the future, the less people, there's more space, and we could play cornhole. We could go teach people to play cornhole. So keep that in mind.
All right. I'm having them, all right, prepare to vote. All right, the resolution passes 5 to 2. That gets us to the end of everything that we're considering. There are several of you who have signed up for our open forum. And again, you can talk about anything that wasn't on the agenda today, or is on next week's agenda. And if for some reason you stray from that, I will correct you of that. But the first three people who are signed up, if you want, are Rick Bocock, Major Perrine, and Catherine Corrick. Folks, as you're walking out, can you not talk on your way out, so that we can have a thing, as soon as you get out there? Thank you. All right, Rick.
Good evening, again. One of my concerns, well, yesterday, was on the street music scene here, and a friend of mine who plays really good guitar, told me that one of the businesses came out and told him that he can't be there. And, you know, he told him he could, but the guy kept pressing him, you know, and he didn't want to cause any problems, you know, and he said, he was just being courteous, you know, as he's going to leave. But here's the, here's the way the Constitution works. See, when we have these business people that do not like street performers or panhandlers, you know, and they're not the same, but, you see, I don't have to ask a business permission. The only thing I got to say to a business owner is that, I'm going to be playing out here by your business. I'm not blocking your doorway. I'm going to be playing here. And the thing is, if they say, well, no, you can't play there, then I'm going to tell them my rights. And I says, then you need to call the police. Then call 911, call Crime Check, whatever they want to do. And because it is a constitutional issue, it's up to the police to tell them, leave the street performer alone. But in the past, like, in the past, this is before the Corona thing happened, there's been incidents, you know, like some of the bars, where the bouncers have come out and abused and assaulted some of the street performers. And there's been incidents, you know, like where I know young street performers, like at some of the bars, that some of the bartenders that come out, I literally have thrown buckets of ice on them. And the police did nothing about it. This is an example about abuse. The street performing scene is part of the culture of the United States, and is intended, you know, to bring more vibrancy into a city. And there's only one thing I like about amplified preachers, who are telling everybody to go to hell, is that they make street performers look good. That's what I like about them. Because they don't look good at all, because all they do is get people mad at them. But the thing is, is that if somebody's going to mess with a street performer, then they got to do the same thing to the amplified preacher that's making everybody mad at them. They usually leave the preacher alone. Supposedly, he has God on his side. But just letting you know that there's two things here. Now, responding to things about somebody talking about our dirty city downtown, we have Downtown Spokane Partnership Clean Team. They go out four abreast, $60 an hour, on, you know, like four abreast on the sidewalks. They clean the sidewalk. So if somebody has a problem with our sidewalks, they should call Downtown Spokane Partnership and say, how come you're not doing your job? But they are doing their job. And the city isn't that dangerous, as people think. I can walk in any neighborhood. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. All right, Catherine Corrick, if you're still here, and Ron Simon and Teresa Simon out for that.
Hello again. I'm thinking about how I can talk about what I want to talk about and not violate the rules. But I, just a couple of observations. And I'm talking about an existing shelter. The Way Out Shelter is very well-designed. And I haven't been in there myself, but I've heard about it from people who have been there. And I spoke with a gentleman tonight, walking in down the street, as I was walking here, who said, do you know, we really help each other, you know? It feels like a good place to be. So I think that some of the concerns about any shelter going forward could be resolved with good architecture, good consultation. Maybe the city's already doing that. I don't know. But I just wanted to bring that point, that there is good architecture available for this kind of project. And the other comment that I have noticed is that people may change incrementally, in baby steps. And I know this in my own family, with people who suffer from addiction. And I know it from the clients that I've worked with over the years. So anyplace we put the people that are having the hardest time navigating life, it's going to take time. Way Out is getting people that kind of are cherry-pet, okay? They're ready to exit homelessness. The people in the low-barrier shelters, coming up right from Camp Hope or off the street, they're not ready yet. So it's going to take time. So we need to have some, we need to have places that are designed to accommodate people for a longer period of time, without driving them through the roof emotionally and mentally. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Catherine. I see Teresa there. So Ron, are you taking a pass?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Teresa, and then after Teresa, Kim Schmidt, and then William Heeling.
I asked Julie Garcia if there was anything she wanted me to say. She said she could use water and a fence out at Camp Hope. So if you guys know where to get water and a fence, we could use some of that. That'd be awesome. I think there should be shelters in every neighborhood. I know you guys all think that industrial is the way to go, but those are my neighbors, and those are my friends. And we need to incorporate them back into our community, and they're part of our community, and their families are taxpayers, and they exist, and they're humans. And there's more resources available, like giving them pants and shoes, and maybe even a Christmas gift. All of my tenants get Christmas gifts. Even the ones that came from homelessness. I would like to say that that building that was purchased on Trent should not be used, and the reason why is because it was purchased with an agenda that the taxpayers didn't get a say in. They schemed and plotted to get it. And you're creating a HOC there. And I think that it was really underhanded. And I think you should go buy a bunch of little buildings, and not one big building by underhanded businessmen who just want to move the crap out of their neighborhood. I think we need to move the crap into their neighborhood, and into mine, and even into my houses, and your neighborhoods. Any questions? They're real people. Thank you.
Thanks, Teresa. All right. And I don't know, is Kim Schmidt still here? Kim's not here. William Heeling.
I got something I want to play up.
I think Jacoby's going to try to.
Oh, good evening.
Might need to plug it into a different port down there, Jacoby.
No, that's not it.
Yes, well, basically, what it was is it was some drone footage of, I don't think people really realize what Camp Hope looks like. It's pretty eye-opening. I mean, I could just, I know everybody lives where they live, but can you imagine 400-some people showing up in your neighborhood? And it's pretty eye-opening. I'm a veteran. I've been around the world. I've been to the third world. I've never seen the stuff that I've seen here in Spokane. I grew up here. I've lived in San Diego. The city administrator, you know, he's talking about, I mean, I heard him mention something about San Diego. Look up San Diego, what's happening? They're currently in San Diego, the police are going in and removing all these encampments. When I lived down there, I used to step over people going to work at night, because I worked security. And as a veteran, I've experienced homelessness. I stayed in my friend's garage over there off of, over by Sonnenberg's for a whole month because I was going SCC as a student and I couldn't pay my rent. And so I understand that, but I got help. And that was like five years ago, six years ago. And, you know, the other day, when I was over there, we flew a drone. And, you know, they show stuff on the news, but I don't think you get an idea, you know, the footage from the air. And, you know, my friend crashed his drone into a tree. So as I was standing there, I had some lady come up and excuse my language, but she called me the N-word. She had some kind of mental issue, obviously. So as she's calling me this word, and she spit on me, I called Crime Check. And as I'm talking to Crime Check, she's going off, you know, and she came from Camp Hope. And so I'm just standing there kind of like bewildered, you know, like why she's, but obviously she had some kind of issue. And so I had another girl standing there come up with a shopping cart. She asked me she would have sex for drugs. Okay, I didn't hear that. That's what my friend told me. And I'm just looking, but she came back later and asked me if I wanted to take her up on her offer, and I said, no, and she went. Now, I'm not saying everybody, you know, these people obviously are homeless, like I said, I was just, but something needs to be done, you know? I mean, it's just sad, you know? Like every, if you, Seattle, Portland, San Francisco, all these cities are experiencing homelessness. I remember seeing Skid Row. You guys know where Skid Row's at in Los Angeles?
William, your three minutes is up for today.
Please do something.
But come back. Thank you. All right. Jane, you're signed up, if you want. Okay, thank you. And Chuck T. Garden, I don't see Chuck here anymore. And Anwar Peace is next. And after Anwar is Randy McGlynn, and then Alan McDowell.
Good evening, council. My name is Anwar Peace, a Spokane resident and a 22-year police accountability expert. Last Monday, the city council approved another $125,000 for a total of $374,000 on Officer Brandon Rankin's Seattle defense attorneys in lawsuit in the January 7, 2019 murder of David Novak. And on April 22, there was a summary judgment hearing that I attended, and I wish to give a report back to the city council what $374,000 in taxpayers' dollars is paying for. First, we found out that the AR-15 that Officer Rankin fired had no flashlight on it and that the shot he fired went between two pillars of two different porches, front porches, before striking Mr. Novak in the back. This shot violated national best practices for appropriate shooting curtain or slashed background because of how close the shot was to the public, and it could have harmed innocent bystanders. The reason, the reason Officer Rankin didn't have a flashlight on his AR-15 is because he failed to take the flashlight training, since the officer felt that the training would interfere with his social life, he said. Second, we learned that the officer's defense strategy is to paint Mr. Novak's situation as a drunken racially motivated active shooting incident, even though Mr. Novak fired no shots, had no gun, and he only had a baseball bat hitting his own truck in his driveway. And third, we learned through public records requests that Officer Rankin's defense attorneys got sanctioned and fined $11,380 for major discovery violations for not turning over almost, for almost over a year, Officer Rankin's employment file. And then when it was turned over, the 361 pages of employment files were heavily redacted and/or pages were completely blacked out. The employment file indicated a document of counseling that Officer Rankin received on March 7, 2019 that wasn't in the file. And when the court, and when the court was told, the document was in fact destroyed due to the, to the department's policy. When the, when the court asked for that policy, they were told that it wasn't a policy, it was just an internal custom, and then magically, the document of counseling appeared before the court. Over the past 40 months, the Novak family has waited patiently for justice for David, with a trial set for June. And now with this kind of obstruction of justice that's unconscionable, this trial has now already cost us $11,000 in fines. And now because of those violations, there's a delay in the trial, so that the trial won't be until October. At this point, the city needs to do the right thing and settle this case right now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Anwar.
Council president, council members. Randy McGlynn, on behalf of the East Central Neighborhood Council. First of all, it is great to see all of you here again. So our neighborhood council has been deliberating over the East Cent, the East Side Library and its disposition, as council is aware, that building is now vacant. And I'd just like to thank Councilwoman Wilkerson, Councilman Cathcart, and the city for their guidance and input through our process of navigating this, this issue. There's been several people that have expressed interest and ideas of what to do with the, with the library there. And, and so we took it upon ourselves as a neighborhood organization to discuss this, to solicit input from our neighbors who do attend the meetings and who come up with a recommendation for city council on that. Through the process, we've changed our position a bit, and so we do have a resolution that we voted on at our last neighborhood council meeting, which I have turned in for you and which I will read for you for the record here. And this resolution by the East Central Neighborhood Council is presented on the 19th of April in 2022 regarding the disposition of the East Side Library on 524 South Stone Street, whereas the Spokane Public Library has constructed a new library located at 402 South Pittsburgh Street and opened on 12th November 2021. Whereas the City of Spokane is seeking input from the neighborhood on the final disposition of the East Side Library, whereas the East Central Neighborhood has an expressed interest in continued use of the East Side Library building to serve the community, and whereas the East Central Neighborhood has a need for additional services in the neighborhood. Now, therefore, be it resolved, that the East Central Neighborhood Council petitions the city council members, city administration, and the mayor of Spokane to include in the RFP the following options considered by the East Central Neighborhood Council. First option is to annex the East Side Library property to the Martin Luther King Jr. Community Center at East Central to provide additional services to the community. Second option is to transfer control of the East Side Library property to the Spokane Police Department for use as a police precinct and the East Central Branch of the Spokane Community Oriented Policing Services, or Spokane Cops. The third option is to transfer control of the East Side Library property to the Hispanic Business Professional Association to provide additional space for their organization. Additionally, we petition to actively involve the East Central Neighborhood Council in the contract award process and to pay all, for all deferred maintenance up to the date of transfer of the East Side Library property to the awarded party of the RFP, by the authority of the voting members of our East Central Neighborhood Council, signed by me as the chair.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Give our best to the council. All right, Alan McDowell, haven't seen you for a long time. Welcome back.
Councils, well, checking, checking, one, two, three, only for review of the mic. Council President, Breeam Beggs. Alan McDowell, City of Spokane, Civilian Department, Pandemic Project Managers, Manager, Spokane County Finance, Tax for Federal Bureau of Investigation, Autozen, Pavement, Seam Men and Concrete Project Manager, plus Onning and Police Boat. Recently, the Spokane Superior Court prosecutor's wife used the N-word on Facebook separately from the prosecutor's office. N-word can mean many things, even names of countries. I wouldn't use one letter words. Pardon for the interruption. The statement relates to a one-room school near the Washington State Idaho border in the year 1985, where the children decided to support the recent Freeman High School shooting in 2017, and name the shooting, quote, Caleb Sharp. The students named the shooting "A Sharp Turn Prior to a Pandemic to Prepare for a Pandemic," and the name Sharp represents the street north of Gonzaga University with an extra E for namesake. Another school throughout the Palouse was represented by a movie called The Basket to describe basketball throughout the Palouse in earlier days and the obvious push by administration and locals to win a Gonzaga National NCAA men's basketball championship. This school had no basketball court of any appearance to current basketball courts shown on television. The children made the decision to create the Basket case to represent all individuals using 1983 civil rights complaints. They choose and ordered myself as the plaintiff in the Basket case only because I was from the area and I was born in 1983 in a future United States Speaker of the House's congressional district. The school was one of many schools I attended in Washington and some in California, maybe elsewhere. A student in the one-room school pulled out a gun and shot a bullet hitting fellow students. The bullet or projectile was carried to the desk I was sitting at, and a fellow student burned my right arm with the bullet. My left arm was previously burning from a spark of hot powder. The students decided independently, minus myself, to represent all prior students in the one-room school. The school was not the only school in surrounding areas throughout the Palouse supporting a Freeman School shooting in 2017. The students wanted to be represented by the United States Constitution, and some brought bibles to the school. There was no school teacher. Once, okay.
That's the end for tonight.
Oh, one, one moment. Sometimes there are workers in the city that also live in the state of Idaho, and they need a break prior to a 100, 100-year pandemic for the last 300 years. And there were some cautions put on a government worker and many government workers using the freeway to Idaho from the City of Spokane.
All right. Thank you, Alan. Thanks, everyone, for participating. I wanted to particularly call out, I see six council staff people who've stayed this long. We've got our clerk here who's stayed, and we've got the TV5 people, so thank you all for your work, everyone.
And our police and our security.
And our security. We really appreciate you as well. Thank you, officer. Thanks, everyone. Please take care of yourself, and if you can, take care of someone else. We're adjourned.
Thanks for your time.